of the Whole to order, please. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Mathie.
Here. Hold on, I'm truly north.
Alderman Sage.
Yeah, I'm gonna read these in a quick bit.
Alderman Millowamway.
Okay? Okay?
Here.
Alderman Burgess. Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Howman.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We have a quorum, and we're gonna move on to public comment. And just to clarify, in public comment, people have up to three minutes apiece. The total time allocated is 30 minutes. It looks like we have nine, so everybody, we're not gonna have to worry about somebody maybe getting caught out, you know, blocked out at the very end. We do not have, let the record show, Alderman Sage has joined us. We don't have a typical protocol where we answer or respond. It's a little more like open mic to give us information. If you do wanna sit down and chat, need answers, you can always come to the mayor's open house. We'll have another one this Friday from 4:30 to 5:30. You can sit right over there by the fishbowl. We talk about anything. It doesn't have to be on the agenda, okay? So, at this point, I'm gonna read these in groups of three, 'cause we do have nine people. Handle this as expeditiously as possible. And if you would be prepared to come forward, someone who's no stranger to this council, Jim Fruin, and then Michael, is it Henry? And Camille Taylor. Mr. Fruin, thank you. Welcome back.
Mayor, I've never done this before, but I told you and Karen before the meeting, I'm still in therapy, so. I did, I did, I did not attend the meeting a week ago, was it?
That's true.
It's pretty hard, and some of you might have the same thing to deal with, too. Oh, I'm on the clock. Well, all right. Good afternoon. With respect to Agenda Item 6, the identification of a single line item in fiscal year 18 budget, I would encourage you to look at the broader issue of territorial decision-making. Our one community has had a successful history of supporting new residential growth, as well as rehabilitating our older neighborhoods. The Grove neighborhood is our fastest-growing Bloomington development, and a reflection of the housing interest and desires of our residents. We all know that staff reports can include or not include many associated issues, and of course, as individuals, we can interpret to our own experience and desires. As a single example, note the paragraph that references a recent regional housing study that concludes in a quote, "Changing demographics and preferences will likely draw people towards more urbanized neighborhoods in the city's core. Less demand is anticipated for traditional single-family homes in greenfield development." End of quote. We all know this is not happening in Bloomington. Single-family housing is simply more accessible in newer developments. The core of our city simply does not provide the land for new housing developments. The clear reality is that a very small percentage of families are choosing our older neighborhoods. While this agenda item has been requested by Alderman Black, Schmidt, Painter, and Burgess, I understand it has been the subject of some internal lobbying within the council, and has been fast-tracked through the staff, who has prepared a 35-page presentation for this one single-line item out of a 200-plus-million-dollar budget. When briefly discussed a month ago on a city council meeting, there was expressed interest to engage other impacted parties. This could include the Grove Neighborhood Association, the Bloomington Normal Home Builders Association, the Bloomington Normal Association of Realtors, Unit 5 Schools, and others. I will look forward to the council's discussion of whether you will be inviting of a more intentional public discussion. Please correct me if I've missed it, but I did not see any communication to the public that this would be discussed tonight. Our community needs both new growth and redevelopment of our older neighborhoods, and I would encourage you to move away from the territorial thinking, actions, and decisions that have evolved within the council in recent years. As one quick example, consider the fact that those representing wards 1, 2, 4, and 7 vote against new neighborhood parks at Gaelic and Eagle View, and I'd be more than happy to come back to give you other examples on future mondays if you'd like. It gives us pause to ask how the voting will unfold when the redevelopment of O'Neill Park comes forward for a council vote. You know me well enough that I would be the first in line to support it. In my 24 years in this chamber, I don't recall a single vote where I opposed any planned expenditure in our downtown or west side initiatives. I'm wrapping it up, please. This gen item is more than a single-line item in fiscal year 18. It's about growing and rehabilitating a balanced community and the avoidance of a decision-making based on individual ward interest. It's about being inclusive to the larger community. Successes in our community come through collaborative working relationships and not territorial decision-making. We all need impacted groups supporting one another for future generations. Thank you for listening.
Thanks. Michael, and then Camille Taylor, and then Quincy Cummings.
Mayor, council members. My name is Michael Herzog, and I'm speaking on behalf of an alliance of multiple organizations here in town, including the local chapters of the ACLU, Black Lives Matter, NAACP, Not in Our Town, and YWCA, and hopefully more organizations to come. We are here today because we don't wanna be like many other cities and wait for a tragedy to strike in order for us to start rethinking how police and community, specifically the communities of color, interact. Many signals point to lack of trust between local police and minority communities, data regarding disproportional outcomes in policing, testimony from current community members, unwillingness on the part of victims to cooperate with investigations. We can debate all day about whether this is the result of a public not being educated on police protocol, or a problem of crime, or a problem of racism, et cetera. But regardless of where you think the problem lies, the truth is, when communities and people groups don't trust the police enough to call them for help, or to appropriately resolve complaints, it creates a public safety crisis for all of us. We believe that we need police and community working together to keep our city safe. Community cannot do it alone. Police cannot do it alone. It takes all of us. We are here in the spirit of collaboration to formally recommend the first step towards rebuilding that trust, and that's the establishment of a civilian review board. The establishment of a board, as outlined in the document we shared with you previously, could potentially serve two functions. The first of which is to help us remove barriers from civilians who wish to file formal complaints, and two, give community members a seat at the table by allowing them to work closely with BPD to jointly develop innovative approaches to community policing. In regards to civilian complaints, currently, very few complaints are formally submitted to the Bloomington Police Department. BPD routinely participates in well over 10,000 traffic and pedestrian stops over the course of the year, but last year in particular, there were less than 20 formal complaints filed. At the same time, we hear many people in the community, especially people of color, express dissatisfaction with the current procedure for obtaining a response to citizen complaints. The current process creates undue barriers to reporting and intimidates many away from coming forward when there are complaints and concerns regarding specific instances of police encounters with members of the community. Our second point would be rebuilding trust. And while it can be said that our organizations are not experts in law enforcement and cannot speak from that vantage point, we are experts in what occurs in our community. It's from this vantage that the community can contribute to better policing by means of a civilian review board. The recommendations that we've provided are guiding principles to ensure that whatever takes shape is not a step back or a sidestep, but rather a step forward towards meaningful and effective community policing. With the data that's out there, and with all that we know, should we fail to meet this moment, we're asking for trouble in the future. Thank you for your time and willingness to engage this group of community leaders in an important conversation vital to our community for the years to come. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Camille? Camille, Quincy, and then Elizabeth Megley.
I'm part of the alliance, and I'm supported a document that's been submitted to you, and was not in our town. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Then Quincy Cummings.
I'm Quincy Cummings, president of Bloomington Normal.
If you could, yeah, come on up. So this is part of our record, you know, even if you only have a few-second statement.
And I'll only give a few. I'm Quincy Cummings. I'm the president of Bloomington Normal NAACP, and I rise to offer support of the proposal that Michael Herzog spoke on in regard to the alliance's desire to establish a citizen review board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Elizabeth Megley.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a few moments to speak to the item number six on the agenda related to the Grove subdivision. I represent the developers of the Grove subdivision, which actually agree with many of the points raised by Mr. Fruin, and really have some questions for the city council, part of which is that the Grove subdivision, what is being thought is an investment in the Grove subdivision, because we feel like that the city of Bloomington and the community at large benefits from this development, which continues to sell homes. It's not as if homes continue to sit on the market. This is an active subdivision that continues to have significant growth. But what we aren't seeing is, we know there's investment in other areas, an idea to invest in downtown growth, and we're looking at what's the return on investment based upon that particular investment in plans or other types of policies that look at local infill, as opposed to what's being invested, or has been invested, in the Grove subdivision, as opposed to the return on investment received there from new growth. Additionally, we would ask that an evaluation be given to the impact on building permits in the event that future efforts by the city council are to make the Grove subdivision kind of a whipping child of sorts, where the city is no longer interested in future development in that area, though not specifically prohibiting it. We would ask that we postpone a final decision on this particular line item, because we feel, like Mr. Fruin indicated, that there are a number of parties that should be part of this discussion. As this council may be aware, a memorandum of agreement was entered into a number of years ago between my client and the city with respect to certain cost-sharing items, which would include the line item at question here. With respect to that, we had an obligation to give notice to the city, and that made sense, because the idea at that point was, there was going to be additional investment, there was going to be oversizing of certain utilities. We gave that notice, as we were obligated to, but yet my clients never received formal notice of an intention to really not proceed with those sorts of upgrades, those sorts of oversizing. And that is a significant impact on my client's ability to continue to develop the subdivision, and requires them to do some real evaluating as to whether they will continue to develop this subdivision in the future. We would suggest that not only should the developer be a part of those discussions, again, the real estate community should be a part of those discussions, as well as Unit 5. We also question whether the addition of what we understand to be new workforce coming in for State Farm shouldn't be a consideration when we determine whether we want to increase growth and have available new residential developments for those individuals when they come into the community. We would ask that, again, we postpone this decision and allow for additional discussions between appropriate parties to determine what's in the best interest of all parties, including the city. Thank you.
Again, just as in a general comment for everybody, we are not acting on anything tonight. We actually, except for the minutes of the previous committee, the whole, so we're not acting on any other, any policy decisions, just to make that clear. Let's see, Erin Kai Ajai and Jennifer Carrillo. Erin?
Howdy. So, we're gonna talk about the police. And so, we definitely need a civilian review board. I really am sick of the police in this town. They really are out of control. And really, this statement goes to all four police agencies in McLean County, all of them, every last one of them, need a camera shoved up their butt. They are just horrible.
Can we keep it respectful?
Yeah, I know. It's difficult for me to do. I'm one of those people that they need to regain the trust of, because I despise them with a fervent passion. And I've tried to explain, at the mayor's meeting, I talked to Amelia Burgess, and while I was telling my stories, and I was trying to tell her the story about something that happened to me 20 years ago. I'm still mad about it. And the horrible part about that is, is that officer is still employed, and this is what he did. I was playing around with the laser pen hanging out my window. I lived on the corner of Washington and Morris, and I hit the little strip on the railroad crossing, 'cause it reflects light, and the laser beam hits it, and it, the whole thing lights up, and I thought that was amazing. So I just kept doing it. I thought it was cool. So, the next thing I know, I had 20 cops swarm my house, SWAT teams, rifles, the works, machine guns, everything. And then I go downstairs, see what it is, 'cause they're yelling, "Throw down your gun in your laser sight." And I'm like, "Look, my keys are on this thing." And so, this officer, he's like, "Well, I don't like your mouth, I'm gonna take you." So, he jumps on me, beats me up, beats the living crap out of me, fills my face full of mace, and then he takes that laser pen and he shines it in my eye, 'cause he thought it was funny. With this smirk, I can see him all laughing and smirking. If that wasn't bad enough, this guy, he took that club and he popped me in my hip, told me I was gonna feel that when I was 30, my hip is hurting like hell. I watch him do this stuff to people all the time. I keep my mouth shut. And one day, they made me mad, so mad, that I decided I was gonna come up here and start talking to all of you people all the time. I have no respect for any government that can't handle this crazy smirk force that you got. We need a civilian review board. We need it now. It needs snarly fangs.
Okay, well, thank you. Your time is up. At this point, we have Kai Ajai, Jennifer Carrillo, and then Leon Cabe? I apologize if I mispronounced that. Kai?
Mayor, council persons, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll keep it very short. We've submitted some documents, well, an alliance of community organizations have submitted some documents to you about a civilian review board. I'm just here to say, as a member of Black Lives Matter, that we fully support the establishment of such a board, and we're looking forward to working with you all to make it a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, and then Leon.
Mayor and council members, my name is Jen Carrillo, and I'm here representing YWCA, so just wanna say that we are in full support of the proposal that was brought forth by this alliance of community groups to establish a civilian review board. Thank you.
Thank you. Leon?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Hey, I'm just here to make my opinion about the citizens' review board, and I just wanna say God bless America. I think we're moving in directions that America would not have ever been thought of from our founding fathers. But also, I wanna say that we live in a constitutional republic, and we all know there's three co-equal branches of government. You've got the legislative, executive, and judicial. And the reason I bring that up is because, what about like a sports game? Let's say basketball. And you've got people that wanna make the rules from the sidelines, wanna change the rules from the sideline. Usually, there's a technical foul, okay? So here we have a review board that can have non-binding procedures. To me, that is like making the rules along the way. Alls I wanna say, then, is also that, how's this review board gonna be made up? Are all the voices in the community gonna be heard? Is everyone's freedom gonna be equal? Or is it just gonna be those that wanna make like they're disenfranchised? That's where the judicial branch comes in. If you feel like you're disenfranchised, act on it appropriately, that the laws of the land appropriate for you. You can hire a lawyer, you can get all kinds of avenues to make sure your voice is heard. And I just wanna say, like, let's say this review board is made up, is sanctioned by the city council, and suddenly, my equal voice is not being heard, disenfranchised. Though I sure wouldn't be afraid to make a lawsuit out of that. Every one of the review board members face them in court, and perhaps the city. I sure think that would be a cash cow, and that's all I wanna say, is, please consider it wisely.
Thank you very much. At this point, we're gonna go ahead and move to a consideration that Committee of the Whole minutes from April 17th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, or are there changes to be made?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Moved by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Howman.
I would like to ask, under background, it notes minutes of July 20th, 2015.
Which, I'm sorry, what are you referring to, Diana? I apologize.
The Agenda Item Number 4 in the packet.
Oh.
Under background, it references the minutes of the July 20th, 2015 meeting. So, I just wanna ask if that'd be...
What page is that? I'm sorry.
It's the only chain, it's the only page.
Oh, the back, oh, I see what...
Background, yeah.
Right.
Probably cut and paste, we just didn't get...
Actually, I think that this was a delinquent set of minutes that we discussed and approved.
It was a delinquent set of minutes.
The minutes that are attached are from April 17th. So I was confused, that's all.
Has been approved. Madam Clerk, do you have any clarification on that for us?
No, not at this time, I don't. I'll have to do some research.
We'll find out if there's a scribbler's error, or what this might be.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, great. But at this point, as presented, and we will get back to find out what that situation is.
It doesn't affect the...
It does affect the substance, but that's right.
The minutes, but yeah.
I see, I see. Okay. Any other comments? At this point, an "I" is, of course, in favor of the minutes as presented, and "a" would be in opposition. Oh, I apologize, I didn't press start vote. The motion carries eight to zero. There are no "as" to announce Madam Clerk. Okay. And as I had mentioned, we're, this is in the Committee of the Whole, and we are this evening discussing several items, and there will be no actual action tonight. Some of them are quite preliminary. Some of them are a little more advanced, some will be looking for a sense of the council on, some exploring our options. And when we start with the discussion of public safety and community relations, that's essentially what it is. And certainly, many of the people in public comment had spoken about a citizens' review board. There are many different options. What we're trying to do as a council is have a first discussion at 500 feet, okay? What is the nature of what we're dealing with, and certainly, we wanna improve community relationships, and what are some of the options moving forward? When I go to the US Conference of Mayors, which is usually 275 to 300 of the nation's 360 metro mayors show up, there are always multiple panels on improving community relations with law enforcement officials. There's almost always a couple of panels on body cameras that we are moving forward with here as well. So those are some of the hot issues. It's not just, obviously, Bloomington. This is a national concern. And in fact, actually, President, former President Barack Obama established a 21st Century Task Force, and the president's task force actually included Sean Smoot, our very own Sean Smoot from Illinois, who's actually an attorney out of Springfield. And the president's task force, I'm just gonna cite a couple of things from it, and one is the quote that President Obama stated. He said, "When any part of the American family does not feel like it's being treated fairly, that's a problem for all of us." So that's essentially where we're coming from. Some of the specific statements, there were many pillars of the president's task force. One talked about building trust, building trust and nurturing legitimacy on both sides of the police-citizen divide is the founding principle underlying the nature of relationships between law enforcement and the communities that they serve, that we essentially need to understand that law enforcement needs to be a guardian, rather than a war eater, and to build that type of mindset. One of the people on the task force, Susan Rar, said, "In 2012, we began asking, why are we training police officers like soldiers? Although police officers wear uniforms and carry weapons, the similarity ends there. The missions and rules of engagement are completely different. Soldier's mission is that of a warrior or a conqueror. The rules of engagement are decided before the battle. The police officer's mission is the guardian to protect, and the rules of engagement evolve as an incident unfolds." And so, we need to understand those types of things. One of the other quotes, parts of the task force that the president put forward, is that "Procedurally just behavior is based on four central principles: treating people with dignity and respect, giving individuals voice during encounters, being neutral and transparent in decision-making, and conveying trustworthy motives." One of the recommendations of the task force was to embrace a culture of transparency. Law enforcement agencies should make all department policies available for public review, and regularly post on the department's website information about stops, summonses, arrests, reported crime, and other law enforcement data aggregated by demographics. They also suggested that police, and our police officers certainly have made an attempt to do this, we can always do better, is to be involved in the community. And community policing is important, and that is going to a variety of different types of events, so that you understand the community, so you can begin to understand if somebody at 3:00 in the morning wanders around a neighborhood because he has narcolepsy, well then, you know, if the police know more about that, they know that that's not a suspicious character, right? So the more that there's information on both sides, certainly, the better. There are many different options that are in front of us, but I thought it would be a good idea, the police chief is turning the other way. Brendan, if you'd come forward, and just very succinctly, so we all know, what is the current process? Because Chief Hefner did change this when he came in, made some changes. What is the current process, and what are the current options, just very briefly, so the council and the public, for the record, knows what our current process looks like? And obviously, this is only one piece, you know, we're talking about improving relationships broadly. This is just one piece, and I wonder if you could clarify that for us, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, council, mayor, citizens. Our complaint process, as it is now, is basically, if a person has a complaint, they can come to the department to get a form, and fill it out, and fill it out there. They can receive assistance there from the sergeant. We've done that. Or a person can download it, complete the form, and mail it in.
Clarify, download it online.
Online, yes. Download it online, and complete it, and send it in. The forms must be completed and notarized as part of the police officer's bill of rights. That's nothing that we made up. It's nationwide. Now, as far as a notary, I know some have asked about, you know, problems with a notary. We have notaries working every shift, so you can get it notarized. There's also other places to get documents notarized. Now, once it is submitted, and I wanna be clear, crystal clear, we welcome complaints. We welcome complaints, because that's the only way that we can learn about what we're doing, whether we're doing, what we're doing is correct, or if we need to make changes. As a matter of fact, that's on the bottom of letters that people receive back. Generally, when somebody submits a complaint, it's usually a response back between 30 to 45 days, depending on the nature of the complaint, and also depending on our caseload with investigator. But we do that. We investigate it, and we get back to people. I will tell you that Assistant Chief Clay Wheeler oversees that. Everything comes through him, and it comes to me. We have Sergeant Chad Wamsley, who does most of the investigations, absent something that occurs on a shift level, and it still has to come up through there. Both of them have extensive investigative background, extensive, and they look at everything. And then it comes through me, and then we get back with people, and we send them a response back. Now, if a person is not satisfied with the outcome, they can come in, it says right on there, they can call and ask to speak with Assistant Chief Wheeler, and come in and have a meeting with him to discuss it, and they can bring advocates with them, and usually, I'm there. And I will tell you, besides the other ways I've told you, I wanna be clear, you know, you can have the Pony Express bring the complaint in, as long as it's completed properly, anything. You can have it dropped in, as long as it's completed properly, we're gonna get back to you. We've received complaints from DOC that we've had to go back, and from the county. Well, we'll go back and make sure that it's documented. we will go back and make sure that it's documented properly, because we take that seriously, very seriously. Like you said, when I came here, we established Office of Professional Standards, so citizens would know that we take what we do very seriously regarding complaints or anything. I think if you recall, a couple of years ago, if you want to see how we look at things within this department, I can't speak with all of them, we discovered something with one of our officers a couple of years ago, that we uncovered, that eventually mushroomed to the point where we terminated that officer. So, regardless of what it is, we will take the appropriate action. And I'll tell you now, I am willing to discuss on anyone, any ideas on how they think the process can be improved. Um, we obviously have some contractual rights, but, you know, if someone doesn't feel comfortable bringing a complaint into us, they can give it to someone else to bring in, as long as it's completed properly. If they want to bring someone, uh, to discuss a complaint, we do that, I have no problems. I'm, I'm open to discussing anything.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to ask Chief if you would maybe stay by in case we have some questions. Go forward. Okay. Alderman Painter.
Um, is the force getting body cameras?
Yes, we were actually looking at body cameras before it hit national. We'd seen other agencies, obviously, there's a big cost to them, and obviously you have to do your research, but yes, we, we are getting body cameras, we are testing some now, uh, just like with any type of new product that comes out, the first and second generations are not always what they seem to be. Um, I talked to my peers, uh, and they've had to change, so we are proceeding diligently, but we will have them.
Okay, will they be compelled to have them turned on while they're on duty?
During, at times, yes. The law mandates when a camera must be on, that's within the law, I have no control of that.
Okay.
It mandates how much, uh, record time there is, it mandates how long you have to retain footage. All of this is in the law, all of this is in our memorandum of understanding right now, because can't pull the policy in place until we actually purchase a prog, the product that we're going to use.
Okay, and if an officer is found to be in violation of protocol, um, are there legal ramifications if it's recorded on the body camera?
Just like anything else, or any other policy violations, we will investigate it, and that will determine what we do. Obviously, um, I will tell you, I was in internal investigations with the state police, I think all of you all have some type of smartphone or computer, sometimes they don't work correctly, sometimes they cut off. However, if we have a person who is intentionally turning a camera off when it should be on, we will deal with that, we will deal with things appropriately.
Okay, and how does the Human Relations Committee play into the complaints that the Police Department gets? Do, do the complaints ever get turned over to the Human Relations Committee if the people aren't satisfied?
We, we are the only people who investigate the complaints, we don't turn the complaints over. Now, a person can take it to the Human Relations Committee...
Does that happen?
But complaints come to us, uh, not since I've been here.
Okay.
But that doesn't preclude anybody from doing that. I always tell people, when they come and talk to me and Assistant Chief Wheeler, if they aren't satisfied, their next step is Mr. Hales and the mayor. People always have that, and if they're not satisfied with them, you always have the civil route that you can take.
Right. Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. You have a seat, but stay close in case we have some questions.
Thank you.
And, um, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the council in terms of thoughts, perspectives, uh, and next steps, what things might do. Uh, Mr. Hales.
Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that we did have Gabe of our legal staff here, if you had any questions or comments you would like him to kind of make, he's, he's available as well to answer any questions.
Actually, thank you, actually, the first thing that I wanted to find out was, um, Gabe, if you could let us know, in, in terms of our police union contracts, there, as I recall, is, um, and I'm, I believe Mr. Jurgens had mentioned this to me, so I'm getting this second hand through, if you could clarify, there, there actually are some limits on review after an internal investigation has been conducted, is that correct?
That's correct.
But it, there could be something that would happen before, is that correct?
That's correct as well.
If you could clarify that.
Yes, my name's Gabe Niergolke, Legal Department. Um, there's actually two separate collective bargaining agreements that we're dealing with, with the police. One is for Unit Number 21, which is the patrol officers, that, the other one is for the sergeants and lieutenants, both of them are almost identical in terms of the provisions that I'll describe, but, um, there's two provisions. The first is Section 5.4A, as in apple, and it says, "The city shall not reinvestigate any incident that was previously investigated by an appropriate authority unless there is reasonable belief the new, that new information is available." An appropriate authority is defined as the chief, assistant chief, internal affairs officer, or such other person expressly designated by the chief of police to conduct a specific investigation. So, that provision would preclude reinvestigation of something that the Internal Affairs Department had already dealt with. Okay? So, that's number one. The second one that...
No, just to clarify that, that doesn't preclude someone from going to court or other things?
Correct. This is part of the collective bargaining agreement, um, and it's dealing with the conduct of investigations for internal affairs, uh, as part of discipline for an officer.
Just hypothetically, and I don't know if this is, but it's what, something that Alderman Painter alluded to, would it be possible for, let's say, a Human Relations Commission to take a complaint before the internal investigation?
Yes.
Or concern, or whatever it might be?
Yes, there's no, there's no prohibition on the civil remedy that's anyone could pursue outside of this disciplinary process.
Thank you.
And the second provision that I wanted to highlight is Section 5.8 of that same collective bargaining agreement, and this one says, it's titled "Compulsion of Testimony", it says, "The employer shall not compel a bargaining unit employee to speak or testify before or to be questioned by a citizen review board or similar entity relating to any matter or issue." So, that one's pretty direct on, on this issue as far as precluding a citizen review board, an officer...
From compelling testimony?
Correct, yes.
Okay. But that doesn't necessarily mean the citizen review board could not exist, it just couldn't compel testimony?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other question, I'm, sorry, anyone else? Alderman Sage.
And Mayor, I think you alluded to this, can, can you perhaps outline a little bit kind of what the remainder of this process looks like, either from, from a, a council perspective, um, staff perspective, um, but I'm trying to understand kind of what the end, the end line of sight through this, through this process, what's not being maybe the initial step?
Sure, I mean, at this point, as I, I probably should have been a little clearer, is that this is our first conversation, our first public conversation, there have been several proposals that have been suggested by several organizations, and this is our first council conversation, so frankly, it's up to us what our next steps might be. Uh, are there some things that we're interested in having staff pursue as a possible option, uh, moving forward? Would it be something that has to do with changes to MAP, or would it be changes to the Citizen, to the, uh, Human Relations Commission? Uh, is there, is there any support, what support is there for some sort of citizen review board? What would that look like? We've seen that there would be limitations, legal limitations on that. Again, any items are on the table, uh, and, and it doesn't even have to be that, because I, I think this is pretty broad, I deliberately wanted to make it broad, because I didn't want us to, to only focus on one means to achieve a broader end. So, certainly more community policing, other options, other ideas, are there more things that we could put online, as the 21st Century Task Force suggests, many other ways that you could change police officer training, uh, so, you know, I, I didn't want it to be, this is our discussion, is that fair to say, Mr. Hales, when we talked about putting this on, we, we wanted to keep it at 500 feet, because there are a lot of options, and this is probably the beginning of a very long conversation, and, and I don't mean that we won't act on it, it's just, you, you should probably always be consistently working on improving law enforcement and, uh, community relationships, and so, eh, there could be, there should be probably many different pieces as we go forward. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah, it, it does, and I'm, and I'm just, and again, I'm not sure exactly how we're going to go, I mean, are, are you going to be offering some kind of a recommendation, Mayor, on where the council might go on this?
I want to hear, I want to hear what the council has to say, and then, you know, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Alderman Millomwambe.
Uh, I think there are a couple who were before me, but I...
No, we're going to, we're going to head go.
Uh, this is the first time people are not rushing to the mic. Thank you. Well, I, at this point, I, I have, uh, a lot of questions, so I, I'm glad that this is a process that would allow us to, uh, investigate this further, but I, um, we have a, um, we received this proposal from the several different groups, um, and I, I think in the proposal, there was a reference to, um, to the fact that we should not feel comfortable with the fact that there are a very low number of complaints. So, I wanted for maybe the chief to, um, address the history of complaints, you know, right now, I understand we're in the 20 range or something like that, but what has it been in the past prior to him instituting some of the changes he's talked about?
I know last year, I believe it was mid-30s, I don't have his exact number, and maybe a little bit before that, when I first got here, there were actually some complaints hanging out there, we cleaned all those up, we addressed them, even some of them were older, and we did that. So, they went down from mid-30s to 17. Now, I will tell you that I have asked some people, what is the number of complaints? What, what, what do you think a number of complaints, and I've asked some people, because if you're trying to do better, and you're talking to your officers about being more professional, which, you know, I always talk about, and community, you know, working within a community, I would think that would happen. Now, in comparison, I will tell you, same aside, Champagne had six, so I don't know what a good number is, but one thing that I will tell you also is that there are people who come in and talk to me at least twice a month, sometimes three times a month, about some issue that they had had with the department or, or an officer, and just to come in and discuss it. And we usually discuss it and working out, and a lot of times, people get confused with what we do and the law. We enforce the law, we don't make the law. Some people are upset about the law and how things should be, we don't, we don't make the law, we enforce the law, but I talk to people regularly, and sometimes, some people just want to come in and talk, and they have a better understanding of why we do what we do. So, to answer your question, could have been 40 when I got here, I know it was 30s last year, but this year is a 17, I, I don't know if there's a magic number of complaints you're supposed to have per calls for service. I would think when you're trying to work hard, they should go down, but as I said earlier, I don't care how we get complaints in, I want to address all of them, so if they go up, I don't have a problem. If we got things we need to address, we will do that.
Okay. Uh, Alderman, we'll go, Alderman Schmidt, Black and, um, Gray.
Don't go away, don't go away.
Don't go away.
Yes, I, I have a question, a follow-up question from Mboka. So, you mentioned that people come in and talk to you, and I'm assuming that they come in and talk to you, but it's not because they filed a complaint, but because they want to have a conversation?
That would be correct, and I will tell you that I have also been approached, when I've been out, sometimes on my own personal time, I'm probably responsible for three or four complaints, because I will tell people, you need to file a complaint, if that's how you feel, especially if I don't have time to talk with them. But yes, people come in to try to figure out why we took the action we did, and we talk about it. Now, sometimes we agree to disagree, but that is not uncommon at all, they'll talk to me, they'll talk to Assistant Chief Wheeler, um, that's why sometimes when we put training on, you know, invite people to training, because it gives you an opportunity to learn why we do, why we do some things. But I will tell you, a lot of times, um, the internet is great, social media is great, but laws that are applicable in other states are not necessarily applicable here, and vice versa, so...
Um, Mr. Herzog mentioned, um, in his remarks and during public comment about the goal of this to remove barriers, promote community policing, build trust, um, so, I, I guess I'm wondering, I think what I hear people ask sometimes is if you have an officer who, whose handling of a situation, uh, may, maybe doesn't, doesn't reflect the highest ideals of, of your, of your force, what do you, can you talk a little bit about sort of what you do in terms of helping to create a force that is, um, that is fully engaged in community policing and, and just talk in general about that?
Well, yeah, we, we expect them to be out of their cars more and engage in people, and I will freely admit, just like you probably have some coworkers, some people are better than others. Some are kind of matter-of-factly about how they go about things, some are jovial, people are different, but, first of all, when we receive, you know, when I hear something, I, in the law force, I work in the realm of facts, so when people tell me something, I listen to it, I cannot really comment, it's just like when I talk to the mayor, or Mr. Hales tells me something, we have to go back and research it and find out all the facts that we can before we make a determination. And if the officer was wrong, then yes, we engage in progressive discipline, or if it's a matter of training, we go down the out route as well.
Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chief, and others for chatting about this very important conversation this evening. Um, just want to take a few moments and just highlight a couple of things, uh, for you specifically, Chief, right out the gate, is that I really appreciate it over the years since you've come into Bloomington and into the Chief's role, what you've done to help start a process, because to my knowledge, prior to you being here, there was no process to file a formal complaint from a resident, is that correct?
There was a process, maybe it wasn't as clear, and maybe we weren't as responsive as we should have been, but I would hate to talk about my predecessors...
Sure.
Because I don't know everything that went on, I'm only responsible from whenever I got here to now.
Absolutely, and I just recall a conversation that you and I had had right out the gate, where, you know, that one of the key things during a budget meltdown that we wanted to have was an Assistant Chief that was in charge of professional standards, and that was one of the few positions that we added at that time, uh, because it was important to this council and important to you, and I appreciate it, and I want to applaud those efforts. I also want to note that you've done a lot of work, um, you know, you do your focus meetings every other month, um, you've been out in the, in the West Side specifically, you know, I've seen you out in, in public, and people stop and ask you questions, so I don't want those things to, to fall by the wayside as we have these types of conversations, and, you know, for your staff as well, I mean, I've been to Northwest Neighborhood Association meetings, um, Gap Old Town Neighborhood Association meetings, where your officers come and have conversations with the residents, and, uh, these are things that I think are really important, and I hope we don't lose sight of as part of this conversation. Um, to that end, uh, you know, I have talked publicly before about the calls that I get typically from folks, and it's mostly, say, about 95%, send more officers in our neighborhood, and there's only a handful of folks that, that feel as though they're, they're not, uh, they call me at least, to suggest that they, they've been unfairly treated, and I'm reminded of a conversation I had last summer, um, at the Tool Library with a couple of residents who were talking, and they, they were of different races, um, about they felt their children were being mistreated by the police, and I was horrified to hear their stories, and, and so I, I showed them the links to the website and how to download the form, told them what to do, I gave them my, my cell phone number, and, and to my knowledge, they never filed a complaint, nor have they reached out to me, and, um, in reflecting on that, it, it occurred to me, and as I've talked to others, that, that might be a function of the fact that they don't feel safe, uh, in talking to, directly to the Police Department, or perhaps even me as the alderman, um, in spite of our best intentions, and so, when I look at this, this document here that's been put in front of us, that has a lot of different organizations...
If you could just, for the record, clarify what you're referring to?
Oh, I'm referring to this document, uh, the Recommendation for Civilian Review Board, that's dated, uh, last week. What I'm seeing here is a conversation about a lot of different, uh, principles that I think are important, and Jeff had sent us an email over the weekend, um, that I wanted to highlight one particular portion of.
If you could also clarify for the audience, I want to understand what you mean Jeff, you mean Jeff Jurgens?
Jeff Jurgens, yes.
Our corporate counsel.
Yes, he sent over a document, and for the record, I'll get the title of it here, the Civilian Oversight and Law, of Law Enforcement, uh, a document from the OJP Diagnostic Center, and there's, on page 14, there was a, a, of that document, a line that, or a subsection I thought was really a, a key piece, is that jurisdiction should focus on best fit rather than best practices when considering how to structure civilian oversight. Um, and, and in the last several months, um, and probably at this point, a year or so, um, I've looked into so many different models of how different communities and municipalities do it, I mean, there are a wide spectrum of, of ways you... I mean, there are a wide spectrum of, of ways you can go about this. And, and I'll be honest, Chief, uh, you know, you're at your best when, when you come up here and you explain to the public a lot of the ways that you do things and how you do them, because I think there's some misunderstanding that can be out there. And I'm particularly reminded when we talked about, um, the shooting range, and how I learned about some of the training that's required by the federal and the state governments that we have to give our officers, whether we want to or not. Um, and so these are the types of things, when we talk about policies and procedures that when we educate the public, uh, I think that's a really good thing. So, um, you know, as Dave Sage is, is fond of pointing out and talking about processes, uh, you know, we, we, our job here is to focus on the whats and let staff kind of work out the hows. Um, and what I'm seeing here is some principles that, that I'd like to advocate for, um, you know, number one, and I'll just comment on each of them, I never want to be accused of not being clear on where I am and on these, these types of issues. Number one, more avenues for submission of civilian complaints, uh, you know, police department could be one, um, the human resource department, too. I'd like to suggest we throw in the clerk as well, um, so just that there's people that can, uh, if you want to go to any one of those entities, you have those options, and following the process of notarizing and, and putting everything in order. Number two, additional independent review of civilian complaints, um, I think this is a reasonable request. Um, you know, we can sort out with the staff and the legal contracts and the, uh, how that all work out, but I can't speak to that at this point, but I think that's a principle worth looking into deeper. Ability to make recommendations following the investigation, there's a different levels of, of, uh, in the different oversight boards I've seen, some report to city manager, some report to the chief of police, I think that's a good thing. Uh, ability to review and make recommendations on department policies and practices, this one's key, I think. It's an opportunity for the police department to really highlight the things that they're doing, why they do them, and always get a solicit feedback, and that helps build that community policing, which I think that we all support. And composed of civilian community members, I think there's a, there's a value in having folks that are appointed to this. There's one piece here about the past criminal record, past criminal records must be, must not be excluded from being appointed. Um, I would take issue with that only in the fact that because this is an, a appointed position and not an elected position, that we should be very careful in how we do that. I'd be okay with some period of time, uh, since a conviction, but I think if that's, uh, if anything with active or pending, you wouldn't want to have, but at some point in time, uh, you know, maybe we come to a point, seven years, 10 years, whatever it be, um, so we can get those folks and their perspective on there. But this is a very important conversation, um, I think it's something that, that we need to, to dig in deeper, and I would encourage my colleagues to, to consider it seriously, because what I'm hearing is that people feel as though they aren't, aren't comfortable coming to us, and that, that's alarming to me. Um, and I, I want to make an institution that helps, uh, address those issues. And you've talked about at length in public today and in the past, and I appreciate that sentiment, that you want to get those, those things in writing, you want to get those addressed, and you want to handle those, which I think is a really key factor. So just encouraging my colleagues to, to, uh, help craft a process as we move forward, to look at these things, and let staff determine what the best way, uh, is forward. So, thank you.
Alderman Bray.
Thank you, Mayor. And my question relates to something that Scott hit on here, Alderman Black, this idea of developing the comfort level so that the conversation goes on. And so my question relates to, uh, currently, what do we have in place as far as community input forums and community feedback mechanisms, uh, so that before we even get to a, a, a time when an incident has occurred such that a complaint has to be filed, how do we cause that conversation to occur? Do we have, what do we have formally in place now to facilitate conversation?
Well, depending on when something occurs, when I have the bi-monthly focus meetings, a person can call and have that put on the agenda. Or, as Alderman Black pointed out, I go to a lot of meetings. I go to meetings where I'm not even allowed to speak, but I go. Also, um, we put on things, but nothing bars someone from calling, saying they would like to, you know, we ask if it's a complaint or something, I, I first direct them to Assistant Chief Wheeler, or if they really, or if they want to discuss something, people call my office, and they come in, and we discuss things. I will tell you that we have a great working relationship with the NAACP. They have come in with people who had complaints, and we discuss it. We also, you know, sometimes, you know, we learn things, um, that we didn't know, and I, I made some changes that were prompted by the NAACP. I guess a lot of what I'm saying is, we're kind of doing things. Nothing stops any of these organizations. I've met with one organization a few times now, I've seen like, I don't know how many versions of this document that you have, it changes. So, um, there's not anybody here that could ever say that they can't get to me to talk to me, to have me come to a meeting, or a representative. And to get to Alderman Black's point, that's not going to change. I don't, it, I'm not always going to be, you know, you just can't go to things where everybody's going to be happy. You have to go to other things where you're going to, you know, you're going to learn ways that you could possibly improve, or you educate people on why you do what you do, and sometimes you agree to disagree. But the main thing is to be professional where you go about it. You're welcome.
Alderman Mathie, and then, uh, we'll go around the table here.
Chief, I was, uh, I was happy to hear you say something earlier, excuse me, that, um, you enforce the law, because, um, I've heard in a bunch of different conversations about, well, that's not fair. Well, that's not necessarily what your job is to do, it's, it's to enforce the law and injustice, and what's perceived as fair may or may not be the same thing. So I, I just appreciated you made that comment earlier. Um, and, and one of the things, you know, since, uh, you know, we've all been doing a lot of reading on this, um, since it was announced we were going to talk about it tonight, and there's been plenty of stories that have been in the media about it recently. Um, and so I made what may be a rookie alderman mistake, and I read the comments. And, um, you know, what's disturbing to me about doing that, though, is that there seems to be a, um, position that a lot of people have, that it's impossible to have a citizen review board and still support the police, that we, it has to be either or. You know, we can't have a conversation about what, how our community is run without not supporting the police. And I, I think that everybody up here would be the first in line to say that we're, we're highly supportive of our police department. We are going to continue to make sure that you have all the, you know, the, as much staffing as we can, all the equipment necessary to keep everybody safe, um, that's on our force, but I, I don't see where it has to be an either-or conversation. You know, you could have somebody who is against, um, you know, going to war somewhere in the world, but they're still perfectly good Americans, and they're still supportive of being an American and everything we, um, we stand for. It doesn't have to be either-or. Um, so Scott, to your point, I appreciate what you said there. Um, I think that looking at something along the lines of a citizen review board, and, you know, there's a ton of details to be worked out, but I feel like that is, uh, Chief, unless there's some way that I'm not imagining that we are, um, we could damage the department, you know, by having this citizen review board, um, I don't see any reason not to continue to, to explore ideas and stuff. I know we have issues around confidentiality, but is there something I'm not seeing here that we would damage the department by having a citizen review, review board?
Before he answers, um, because this, we're going to go on for a little bit, uh, and I'll also give you a minute to think, uh, Chief, uh, could I have a motion for us to extend our public comment, or, excuse me, our, our, our discussion for another 15 minutes?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Howman, would everyone please vote?
By 10 minutes?
I said 15.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, if that was okay with everybody, okay. And that doesn't mean we can't extend it again, but, okay. We just want to be, uh, keep our procedures in line. Chief, sorry, go ahead and answer.
Think you heard from the legal person that there are contractual issues. So there, there can't be an independent review. Now, I have said that I will talk to anybody, and I have, I will continue to do that. I'm a proponent of using the process. If your organization knows people who want to file a complaint, but they haven't, and some people I've talked to, like, someone said, something happened 20 years ago, there's not a lot I can do about that. But you can be an advocate for them. I guess I'm a believer in the process. Don't say the process doesn't work if it hasn't been used. And if we have some people that feel like that, then advocate for them, bring them complaints. You could take it to HR, you could take it to legal, however it's done, as long as it gets over there to us, because that's respecting the person, you know, that you're making complaint about, or the department. And no matter what business you're in, everywhere has a process. You have to have a process, and it has to be a fair process. And as Alderman Black pointed out, uh, there are some things, and like I said, I'm not sure which version you've had, I've seen a few. Some are very, uh, I guess very pointed, some are different, but there are components there as far as who could be on the board. If you're going to be reviewing police officers, uh, it has to be people who are not biased.
Yeah, absolutely, I agree with that.
We're not supposed to be biased, and we look at things. I think I told you earlier today, if we can investigate one of our own, and I terminate them, I'm man enough to investigate anything else that needs to be done. But that's me. I know opinions vary. So I will continue to talk to people, I will be open about ways to improve the process for people to file complaints. And like I said, I look forward to it, because what we're doing is communicating and conversing. And if I learn something that we got to do better, that's fine. If we educate somebody on why we did something, or maybe it's something with the law, and I need to tell them, they need to speak with the state's attorney, or their state reps because it's a law, that's what we do. But we only do that when we're communicating and talking to each other and not at each other.
That's, I think that's a perfectly fair answer. One of the things that you mentioned in there is there's some legal ramifications, um, that have to be dealt with in this, but if it was a, you know, a non-binding advisory committee, um, that probably doesn't impact those legal ramifications the same way. There's details to be worked out, but it sounds like, you know, if, what we're talking about is we're, we're talking about people who follow the process, but they're not unhappy, they're unhappy with the, um, outcome of the process, giving them another avenue outside of that, I think there's a lot of detail to be worked out, but it sounds like there's not anything necessary that actually harms the police department by doing this right now.
I, I really couldn't say, I mean, obviously...
There's a lot of conversation still to be had first.
Yes, yes, I, I just reserve a comment on that.
And if I could, on that, is, as I understand the, one of the answers to, and I'm looking to legal counsel, is it currently possible for someone to file, uh, in a sense of concern or complaint with, with our Human Relations Commission before they go to the, the police?
I'm sorry, they could complete it and turn it into the Human Relations Committee.
But I mean, for the Human Relations Committee to...
They can't investigate it if you, in, anything that would have to happen...
They can't, okay.
...in regards with a police officer, it has to be done by the department. But that doesn't mean that they cannot use a Human Relations Committee as a mechanism to get the complaint over. You know, if somebody feels they're, they're not safe or whatever, or they can let the Human Relations Committee look at their complaint.
Right, okay, yeah, then, I think you, they, is that, that's correct, I'm assuming, just from the...
I'd have to review the code on the Human Relations Commission, but I, my understanding is that it deals with elements of discrimination, so you could follow that with them at any time, separate from the investigation that IA conducts.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Jim, are you finished? I'm sorry. Alderman Sage, and then Melo Wambway.
Thank you. Um, so two or three different things. Kim, want to follow up on something that you asked, Chief, because we've also, you've also had some, some efforts, like I think coffee with a cop, ice cream with a cop, you, you've, you've also had, those are a couple of other community touchpoints that I think have, have been put in place since, since you've been here as well, beyond the numerous other interactive points that, that you touched on in your comments. So just kind of wanted to, to kind of put that into a corner for, for Kim. So I, I want to be, uh, I, I want to, I guess, what I'm, what I'm asking myself is, what's the problem we're trying to solve? Because I, because I have yet to hear, um, a, a, for myself, a compelling reason for a citizen review board, um, especially given the fact that, that we've learned here tonight that you have a couple of options to, to access the form itself, you can either come in in person and get it, or you can download it. Then, then, then the next level of access points then would be giving the, giving the correctly filled out form back to us. So we've heard the Human Relations Commission is one, uh, we've heard the police department is one, I think Scott alluded to, you know, perhaps the city clerk might be an option. I think, Chief, you just, you just said, you know, it could be legal, too, it could be human resources. There, so there, so, so it seems to me that getting a hold of the form, you have, you have a couple of options for that, how you, how you bring that form into the system, there are, I, I think, a number of options for that. Um, we, we have a process internally for, for reviewing those, um, up through and including the city manager and the mayor. Um, and then beyond that, we have, then there's the opportunity for someone could, um, could go to, um, and, and, and file something in, in a court of law, okay? So, so when I'm looking at, when I, when I look at that and I say, okay, you can, you can get a hold of the form anonymously if you want to, you, you can fill it out, there are multiple ways to submit it. We have a, a fairly detailed process for investigating those, and, and then there are, there are opportunities then, depending on the outcome of our own investigation, for somebody to, um, to, to follow if they're not satisfied with that. So the question I keep coming back to, and, and also in addition to, to, um, what Alderman Painter asked about, was the fact that, you know, we're, we're, we're very intentionally pursuing body cameras, uh, for use by our police force. So, so what I keep coming back to is, is what, what is the problem that, that is currently not being addressed with the processes as, as is outlined here? And I, again, I haven't heard a compelling reason for a citizen review board. Um, I, I think there would be, I, I think, an option, like I said, introduce a couple more access points, um, but, but I, for myself personally, um, I, I think we have a, a process in place, again, with a couple of other access points, as some others have suggested could be added, that, that I think is, is, is working okay. So thanks, Chief, for your hard work on that.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the, the general answer to that question at, you know, in other communities, and I think possibly implied by some here, is when citizens review, rather than oversight boards, but review boards, um, are, are established, it's usually because they want an independent set of eyes rather than the internal process. I think that's the, that would generally speaking be the rationale. Alderman Melo Wambway?
And, and Mayor, since you chose to respond to me, I, I will say, I think I understand that, but again, I haven't heard a compelling reason for, for why I, as an elected official, would, would support the review board. I, I haven't seen any, any gaping holes in the process that suggests that, that this fundamental change in, in, in the operations and oversight of the police department suggests, at least for me personally, I'm just speaking for myself, any, any type of a review board.
Alderman Melo Wambway.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm glad that Alderman Sage, um, asked a question, um, because I think, um, the solution, um, the answer to that question will, um, you know, rely on whether or not we're able to, to define the problem. Um, so I, as far as I see it right now, I, I think, uh, the problem is perception, um, of, um, how, you know, community relations, you know, between police and, and the community, and whether that's, you know, real in some areas, I'm sure it's real for some people, uh, and in other areas, you know, it, it may not seem as real based on facts or, um, whatever. I think, um, so we, we, we do have to figure out then, you know, how we're going to deal with that perception. Um, you know, one of the things that, um, came to, to my attention, I was listening to a, I guess a GLT report of, um, a couple of people who, uh, you know, who were talking about their experience about filing a complaint, and it made me think that, you know, and this is not a, I think, you know, when it comes to, to the chief, um, you know, and, and other, uh, police officers and, and others who are, um, involved in the process, um, yes, I, you know, I know the chief very well, I know what kind of person he is, but, uh, others on the other side, um, don't necessarily know, know you, know how you do your job. Uh, so I, I think the couple was talking about the fact that it wasn't just about filling out the form and turning it in, but it was, you know, afterwards, you know, that the fear that some people might feel about, um, you know, having filled out the form, and what exactly is going to happen, you know, are they going to... exactly is going to happen, you know? Are they gonna face some sort of retaliation? And I'm not talking about, I'm not saying that it's, you know, that's actually what's going to happen, but I'm talking about, you know, this is some, how do we address that issue for people who might feel fearful, uh, real or not, but it's an issue that we have to deal with. It's there, you know?
First of all, like I said, I've only been chief here a little over three years, but I've been around here, no one, to my knowledge. Well, I would just say since I've been here, but even other investigations, because when I was working for another agency, I would've been called in to investigate it, never had any incidents of retaliation. Now, did they occur something, nobody knew about it? That could be. Um, however, it, it's hard if you're not open-minded to do things. But one thing you have to look at, you know, we're about eighty thousand, depending on the day, but we are not that big. So, hypothetically, if an officer was going out and did some things after a complaint was filed, was retaliated, it would kinda stand out a lot. And between the dash cams in the cars, between witnesses, we would follow up on that vigorously, because we don't want anybody to feel like that. But I think we get painted with a broad brush because of some incidents that have occurred in other places. And, um, that is unfair to these officers here. Now, do we do some things wrong at times? Absolutely. Can we improve? Absolutely. As a community, are we perfect? No. But I will tell you, this is a great place. Go north, south, east and west, and then come back, compare it. We're pretty good. Um, I think that besides what Alderman Sage said, as, as far as using these entities within the city, an organization can bring up forward a complaint on behalf of somebody with the paperwork filled out properly. Now, I can't speak for a hundred percent, but they're going to monitor what happens and what goes on. So, for someone to retaliate, I couldn't rule it out a hundred percent, that would be kinda just, quite frankly, stupid, okay? I know somebody said, and I think I know the conversation, or what you heard on the radio in that instance, that is an area where there had been a lot of gang activity and fights. And so, yes, the same officers had been over in the area subsequent to that, not because of them, but because of what had been occurring. Because if we're around there, less opportunity for that to happen. So, I think if people use, I, I look at these other organizations as advocates for, for people. If you wanna break it down and see, they can be there, they can see the process, and we go through it. I think we have a process. I think we have a good process. I told you about who we have involved. We even have an early warning system. Officers get a certain amount of complaints. It, we don't have to look it up. We don't get that many as it is, but an officer has a certain amount of complaints, it's gonna be flagged, and we might have to look at it. It might be something, it might not. One other thing I would tell you is that when we look at complaints, while it may come back not sustained, that doesn't mean we don't talk to the officer and say, hey, you know what? This is not sustained, but maybe the next time, your tone could've been a little better, or maybe you could've done a better job explaining the situation. So, to get back to your point, it just, it's just gonna take work. And quite honestly, we can't please everybody. Some people are just gonna believe what they're gonna believe. But I think these organizations can be great advocates for people. They can bring the complaints through them. Doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Yeah, our, uh, time's at an end, I, but I'm gonna turn to Alderwoman Housman for just a couple, we'll take leave of that, especially if it's quick. I just wanted to let everybody know that certainly all of the evidence that I've ever seen in, at US Conference of Mayors on body cameras, it reduces significantly the injuries to officers and to civilians. And that's certainly something that is certainly coming, and it could be part of investigations afterwards. It's preventative as well as, uh, you know, helpful afterwards to really get a, a handle on what had, may have been happening in a situation. Alderwoman Housman, and then we'll try to summarize.
Thanks. Um, Chief, thanks for being with us tonight. Um, I think, you know, I support the police and have great respect for our officers and their skills and the commitment they have to our community. But I also, and I, I also appreciate the, the five organizations that have come together to at least start this conversation. We don't know where it's gonna go, but to bring their concerns to us, that, um, they feel comfortable trying to, um, as they say, remove barriers and build, build trust. Um, and as Alderman Milowamway mentioned, it's, um, it's easier to, it, there's a perception. And from my, my experience, it's easier to change reality than it is to change perception. And, you know, I think you've been working on changing reality and, and hopefully, um, by learning more about, how the police handles complaints and so forth, we can, um, hopefully, change that perception as well. But I do, I do appreciate the, the five organizations that have come together. Um, what we discussed two or three months ago, um, is certainly different than the recommendations for civilians that they've, they presented to us on, on May 11th. I think they've, um, uh, done some research and tempered their requests, and I look forward to the conversation going forward.
Okay. At this point, to, to summarize, and is, it seems like there's some degree of interest, not universal, um, in at least exploring some options, uh, in other communities, I think as Alderman Black suggested, and this would be, uh, some kind of review. It sounds like from legal standpoint, it would have to be before the regular procedure, an advisory group that might filter complaints beforehand for the, the contract, excuse me, according to the contract?
You done with me?
Uh, yes, yeah. We're never done with you, Chief. Yes, if you can forward.
Be clear, I, I'm sorry if I wasn't earlier. Um, the review...
In any sort of advisory group or whatever would have to come before, or it's just, they could, an officer could not be compelled to...
So, there's a, a wide spectrum of ways you could go about this, this, uh, review. And some of them deal with actually reviewing the internal affairs investigation once it's completed. One of them deals with actually a different investigation that takes place outside of internal affairs. And one of them is more of an, a auditor, monitor, systemic policy recommendation type function. So, there's really three main ones. Uh, the investigation, supplanting the police IA, if, internal investigation, would run into the most problems with our current collective bargaining agreement. So, there's a lot of different ways you could go about it, uh, and they don't have to happen before the internal affairs to conduct...
And so, is there, uh, thank you. Is there consensus on the council then for us to at least have staff articulate some of the possibilities moving forward? Alderman Black?
Yeah, it, thank you. Um, I'll, I'll just be clear about what, what I think would be a best-case scenario, is that, as, as noted before in that report, we're looking for the best fit. So, I'd like to see what that would look like for Bloomington in actual ordinance, and we can sort some of those details out based on the principles that have been outlined here, so we can see what that would look like to our collective bargaining agreements, and we can determine if that's something that we'll have to negotiate or how that shapes out. But I, I, I'm done researching. I think it's time for us to actually take a look at, at, at verbiage and ordinances and, and application to Bloomington itself.
Well, I think there, there was still, um, right, but I think maybe we might wanna at least have several different options perhaps presented to us, because I think we did not really have consensus, if that's fair to say, on what model we might use moving forward? I didn't get that sense.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna have staff spend time on...
A particular ordinance?
...creating an ordinance until we've determined what our...
What, what the elements are gonna be?
What the, well, and what the, what the purpose, if, if we have a, um, citizens review board, what their purpose is and, and how we would like to see them, um, perform.
So, um, we'd have staff take a look at this and report back to us about what our options are, some of the, rather than an ordinance?
And, I mean, I think, um, as Scott, I think, was alluding to, we can, we can certainly do some of that to see what other communities are doing.
Sure, okay. Uh, Alderman Sage?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it, it's incumbent on, on the elected body here to, to offer staff just more guidance than, than look at a few options and come back.
Okay, fair enough. So, let's, so then we'll do our homework, and then we'll circle back and, uh, have a second subsequent conversation, and then maybe move forward with something.
And, and, and help me understand what that would mean, Mayor, from your perspective? I mean, in terms of some next steps?
I think what we would probably then do is bring, have another committee, the whole meeting. Um, I don't know what, I would say, I'd have to talk to the city manager in terms of what things are, are coming up on our agenda, possibly next month, and that's plenty of time for people to do extra homework. And then, if there's support for a particular option, then we, at that point, could direct the staff to come up with an ordinance.
And forgive me, I, I mean, I'm not sure what extra homework means. So, I mean, this is, this is an important issue, so we wanna make sure we're speaking clearly here for, for the folks that are in the room. So, when, when you say, I, I'm not sure what extra homework means.
Well, I think I was referring to what you had suggested. That was incumbent upon us.
Okay.
To do our work, rather than to, say, staff come up with some options.
So, some conversations amongst ourselves, is that what you're suggesting?
Correct, correct. Absolutely. Sorry, I wasn't clear. Thank you. Sure. Alderwoman Schmidt?
Um, I think I would also appreciate having a little bit more clarification from our attorney about what different scenarios, how they, how they play out.
Well, you, if I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but essentially, just a few minutes ago, you outlined several options.
I don't know that, I certainly don't know that I fully appreciated what you were saying in terms of avenues for filing concerns and complaints, um, the, um, any kind of protocol for investigation and, um, you know, testing of evidence, um, or what, what might happen outside a legal realm that has to do with, um, a citizen engagement in policing? I mean, you know, is there some line there? I, I guess I, I, I need to understand the contract better and to make sure that we're not proposing ideas that have, have no future.
I'll try to answer your question. Um, the, the contract that I've mentioned earlier, this is, uh, is collective bargaining agreement, unit number 21. It, it says in 5.4A that you can't reinvestigate. So, essentially, in the current contract language, uh, among the three different main types, review, investigative, and auditor, monitor, uh, the investigative is a complete, it's a civilian investigation that's occurring instead of the police investigation or alongside it. So, if it was occurring alongside our current process, it would be in violation of the contract. So, that one...
That's still, that would be, I mean, I'd just like to see that.
Absolutely.
Could you send us a memo summarizing that?
Not a problem.
Thank you. Okay.
Appreciate that, thanks.
All right, okay. So, um, stay tuned, all right? At this point, we will move on, and we move on to the next item on our agenda, item six, which is presentation discussion of possible direction regarding infrastructure oversizing at The Grove. And we have a brief presentation by Mr. DeBryiner, and then some council discussion.
I guess they don't wanna hear your presentation.
Don't take it personally, Tom.
You know, a little hurt. Really, we're out of time, so I, I, you know.
Okay, Tom, hit it.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor and Council, um, I have a few goals tonight. I wanna, in, I've got five minutes, and the clock started already. Uh, I wanna provide a very brief background on the issue that we're talking about, a little bit on fiscal impact, uh, talk about the comprehensive plan, and then, uh, you know, what do the city attorneys say? Um, I do wanna acknowledge Jim Karch, uh, who reviewed, uh, contributed to and reviewed the report by Yale, Jeff Jurgens, and his, uh, and all of their respective teams. Um, they're available to answer questions tonight. Uh, George Boyle is here in, uh, Jeff Jurgens' place. Um, the annexation agreement for The Grove was adopted in 2005, and it states that if oversizing in the sanitary truck trunk sewer is required, the city is responsible for those costs based on the geographic area service. Uh, we'll touch on that again in a, I've already lost a minute. We'll touch on that again in a couple minutes. Uh, so the question before us ultimately is should the oversizing requirement be triggered? Um, we're not making a recommendation tonight. We're simply providing some information that represents input from several departments. Um, so, um, assuming the work was triggered by the city, um, the work would be done by the developer. The oversizing work would be done by the developer and would save costs, uh, by doing it now as opposed to waiting and doing it in the future, uh, for the cost of the oversizing. That cost burden is about, is estimated to be ninety-seven percent of the total cost of the project. Uh, and again, that's based on geographic area. Uh, the city's share of that estimated amount would be three hundred thousand dollars. Um, now, let me jump into the revenue and fiscal impact analysis. It's a, um, expected that three hundred thousand dollars could be recouped by tap-on fees. Uh, there's also water, uh, service oversizing and possibly some pavement expansion. The water service, uh, could, could be recouped in water bills. The, um, added pavement would likely come from property tax revenues. Um, of course, this all assumes that there is sufficient growth in the future on the east side to, uh, generate the tap-on fees and the taxes. Um, alternatively, um, and this is a fairly common approach, the tax burden could be shifted to residents and property owners elsewhere in the community. And this occurs right now. For example, the Grove area is a fiscal net loss to the city according to the comprehensive plan and the fiscal impact analysis contained therein. It's fiscal net loss of about four hundred and eighty-eight dollars per acre, per year. And, um, uh, obviously, adding more to oversizing costs, uh, for the city, uh, would simply increase that particular, uh, deficit. There are areas that are net positive, and that tends to pay for residential areas that, um, are, it's pretty common for those to be, uh, net negatives. Comprehensive plan provides a, um, some guidance throughout. Uh, first, we wanna ask the question, you know, will this growth even occur? Um, I can tell you that not just here, but nationwide, population forecasts are lower, household numbers are lower. Um, that's been taken into consideration here. Uh, the comprehensive plan also included commercial, uh, employment areas still within the core of the city, uh, near existing residential properties. And we have a specific goal in the comprehensive plan that addresses this specific question. Um, it's found on page 215 of the comprehensive plan, CF 1.4, and it directs the city to focus resources on maintaining and developing, I'm running out of time, uh, developing facilities that support the goal of contiguous and compact growth. Again, contiguous and compact growth. Uh, the plan provides some tools to help do this. It talks about development priorities. It's set up a tier one, tier two, tier three system, tier one being, um, the, uh, top priority, tier three being the lowest priority. For The Grove, I wanna be clear, The Grove itself can continue to develop. That is a tier one according to the plan. It's the areas outside that we're talking about, the need for the oversizing, um, and those are tier two and two, tier three areas. So, they're lower priorities. Um, and it, there is a, some question, and I included this in the document, uh, some other reports that suggest that it might not be as strong of a, of growth as, as, um, once imagined. Um, the legal perspective is, uh, really pretty straightforward. Uh, the city may demand the oversizing or not. Um, there is really no trigger. The city may exercise either option, um, and the attorneys, but the attorneys do point out, made a point of, of indicating that there's something, you know, this is unusual to have a, an agreement, um, on oversizing that's based on geographic area and not the actual physical costs of going from this size pipe to this size pipe. Um, and in, in this case, the city will pay an estimated ninety-seven percent of the cost of the, um, of the improvement, um, which is more, which is greater than the cost difference between the two pipe sizes. Um, so, again, this would be a, um, another potential subsidy towards The Grove, um, in terms of paying more than what would be required for simply sizing it for the, sizing the pipes for that particular development. Um, I'm...
But if you could clarify also, we're talking about approximately thirteen thousand acres, right, that are not even in the city right now?
Thirteen thousand acres that aren't in the city and actually don't match the comprehensive plan's ultimate development borders, uh, in that area. Uh, that's much smaller than the comprehensive plan.
Okay. So, so essentially, it, it would be fair to say that no, no current residents of The Grove would benefit by this?
They don't benefit, nor are they hurt.
Right, okay. They're not affected. Okay, thanks. Right, okay. They're not affected. Okay, thanks. Okay, council discussion, we start at 25 minutes. Alderman.
Thanks. I planned on asking if this be pulled, but I didn't because I thought the conversation would be valuable, at least. I was disappointed that we didn't have a discussion with the homeowners association or the developers, and you may have, but we haven't, if that, not, when I say you, the city staff, not you particularly.
I am the city right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I feel like we should have included them in this discussion, just so they would know what was happening. We, and I, Jim, I apologize, I'm being somewhat territorial here, but I do represent, I was elected by the people in Ward 8 to be represented on city council. And although I do try to look at the city as a whole when I'm making decisions, since this is in Ward 8, I feel it's important. I sometimes feel like we're always kind of kicking the Grove because, for whatever, whatever happened before, it's kind of like the Colosseum. We've got the Colosseum, let's make the best of it. We've got the Grove. As former Alderman Fruin has told us, not everybody, you know, wants to live in a historic neighborhood, a historic house, and that's fine. I mean, that's why we live in America, we have choices. But when I did talk with the homeowners association president today at length, and the feeling is that, not concerned about the over, upsizing, oversizing, whatever of the sewers, if it's something that would impact future development outside of their, what's on our, on our pretty map here. So, that being said, if it's adequate for what's mapped out today, they were, they were okay with keeping it the smallest size.
Right, and we would be happy to talk with them, obviously. You know, again, just to reiterate, I, you know, the oversizing issue doesn't really affect.
Yeah, it's just the timing, that's all, that I was, so, yeah. So, Mr. Benedict indicated that as long as it's adequate for what's currently on the books, then we'd be okay to proceed.
And just to clarify, the comp plan had about 8,000 people involved in it, and is certainly something that was an award-winning plan, some of the things we're talking about.
That's massive, that's still considered massive nationwide, one of the reasons why we won a nationwide award.
Yeah, but, you know, the Grove was, would have been part of the previous comp plan. I mean, we've, things have changed.
No, I don't think it was part of the plan.
Well, no, but I mean, things have changed since 2005 in terms of population growth and where people are building and that kind of thing. So, I mean, while I certainly respect the comprehensive plan, and, you know, and I'm glad we're using it in making decisions, that doesn't mean we can just throw the Grove.
It's not doing it, so.
And I think you can also make the argument, though, if, I mean, if I were in the Grove, and I don't live that far from it, but if I did, I probably wouldn't want this, because if there were, if that 13,000 acres was developed north of us, if the city, you know, it's not part of our plan, we shouldn't be sprawling and annexing things. But if you had all that developed, you'd have even more congestion problems, because people are complaining about the weight at the light at Tawanda Barnes and Iron Grove Road, even as we speak. So, again...
But they still, but they would still like their park.
Yeah, again, this doesn't have anything, the sewer doesn't have anything to do with their park.
I just have to get that in there, they would still like the park they were promised many years ago.
Mayor, if I could, I just want to, again, make sure the council's clear. Again, this item was put on the agenda at the request of Alderman Black, together with three Aldermen who supported that. So, again, I did ask Tom to kind of pull together kind of a consolidated, just staff overview of this topic.
I got the short straw.
But keep in mind, the request at hand is that, is to determine, is the council's majority willing to support the recommendation, and that is to consider a budget amendment to remove the Grove sewer oversizing project and using those funds for projects in areas of highest need, consistent with 2015 comp plan. So, again, that's the issue at hand.
So, you were asking for a direction over?
Yeah, I just want, and furthermore, is because, you know, the first step is to bring it back to a committee of the whole, there, you know, we are still at a very early stage, so there just hasn't been that outreach at Alderman Hammond's request. We are going to follow up on a request she had, that we meet with the Grove's homeowners association, talk about this issue. We also have not sat down with the developers of the Grove, or developers, anyone else at this point in time, you know, to get any more information than absolutely necessary, to have the council begin the discussion and see what direction they want to give staff. So, just wanted to follow.
We'll start with Alderman Bray.
Thank you, Mayor. So, if we take a look at this and say that we're going to allow the developer to go forward with eight-inch pipe rather than the upsize pipe, I'd like to talk a little bit about the opportunities potentially missed. So, are we thinking about opportunities for residential growth? Are we looking at precluding commercial growth in this space? And that's, that's kind of where I'm going with that.
Really, the plan had called out, well, first of all, the annexation agreement was based on negotiations from 2005, which is very different than what the current plan says. So, inherent in that particular assumption that leads us to that 97% is some kind of even amount of demand across 13,000 acres, you know, if not spot by spot on average. And that's really not based on any projection that I'm aware of, I think that's just an assumption. The idea was, and this, I mentioned this in the report a little bit, in terms of some of the regional planning activities. At one point, there was a thought that the East Highway would come through that area. In talking with the Regional Planning Commission, they're not so confident anymore. That would have provided an amount of infrastructure that would have allowed some additional opportunities for growth. So, you know, it's really a mix of employment centers and residential that's planned for that area, but it's really planned in that, you know, 20-year timeframe, to 20-years to 30-years timeframe into the future. And probably, if you're talking to 13,000 acres, it's quite beyond that timeframe, probably looking at more like 50 years. That said, we don't have population projections that are suggesting that. And in fact, there is a significant amount of space with infill and in the tier-two areas that are immediately adjacent. And the one thing that tier-one and tier-two, which is priority-one and priority-two, development priorities, have in common is the ability to expand without expanding utilities or roadways, things like that for the most part. So, and that's one of the reasons why it's more cost-effective to develop inside the city as opposed to out on the fringe. So, you know, it's hard to answer your question specifically, but there, because there are so many assumptions that go into that, and the sizing of the pipe. At this point, we really can't project that far into the future to see a need, and certainly for 13,000 acres of development. But it does, would cover the full range of land uses.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, just as a follow-up to that question, could I ask Jim Karch to come forward? Because I, I think there is an issue on just the current cost differential, current versus future, in having the developer put in an eight-inch pipe. But then later on, in the future, if we had to come back, dig it up, upsize, can you just comment a little of, on that issue and the opportunity costs that could be lost from the cost differential now and in the future?
True. Thank you, City Manager. To your point, that is, that is correct. From an opportunity perspective, again, it depends on whether it develops or not. This Grove subdivision is at the low point of that. 13,000 acres, the study stopped, we went back and looked, 13,000 acres has been used because I, that was the best number I could remember the night we first had, that was a great number, everybody seems to capitalize on that. But, but we went back, and we tried to find how many acres, and the study only extended just over 7,000, but it stopped. It actually continues out. We remember an old number. But, but again, whether you say 7, 8,000, it's hard to even fathom in this, whenever you talk about that kind of numbers. But the opportunity cost that the City Manager was referring to is, this is a stream restoration area. The area where this trunk sewer is going is pretty standard in the fact that it's done at a waterway. A lot of times, you know, the waterway is with some lower points, the sewer, trunk sewer is a lot of times very consistent with that. Most of the larger sewers in Bloomington are similar. So, in this case, the issue might be is, down the road, if we went to build a parallel sewer, the cost in a stream restoration area and when back with backyards does exponentially increase. And so, but again, that goes back to that larger concept of, from the council's priority is, where do they want to go? If, you know, we can, we can say this annexation agreement, but future ones are for the, for the council to determine and accept.
All right, thank you. Alderman Black, and then Matthew in Millwall Way.
Thank you, and thank you, Tom, for talking to this point. And this is a conversation that we've been having for a while, and I respect Alderman Fruin's opinion on this matter. And I definitely like to think of our community as one community, and this isn't, to me, a ward issue, but we came in 2015 and talked about a comprehensive plan where we collectively agreed as a majority that we wanted to focus on some infill development. And the conversation about the missed opportunity is a good one, because it only reinforces my perspective that, to me, the real missed opportunity is not investing in our historic core. And I'm concerned that, you know, we roll the dice on putting this here, and I get we don't want to tear people's yards down the road, and that might be an unwise decision, but I can sleep comfortably at night knowing that that, the reason why I want to do this, we have limited resources, this is not a lot of money, this is something that we can do to make a big impact in our historic core, which can absolutely impact many people who live in Bloomington currently and are not based on a future projection. So, I certainly understand my colleague's opinion on this, but to me, this is a value judgment on where we put our resources, how we fund our projects, and the direction that we go. So, I appreciate hearing more conversation.
Excuse me, thank you very much. Well, and of course, there's no reason why, if for some reason there was development that's needed, that the developer couldn't pay for it, rather than current taxpayers, 20 years from now, 30 years from now. Or they could incorporate and then provide their own, because there would be 911 service problems like we have in Alderman Bray's, or imagine the ones we'd have if you had to do a big circle and go all the way out, you know. Anyway, those are some of the costs that's for all we've talked about. Let's see, Alderman, Matthew, and Millwall Way.
How many houses are we talking about? I mean, it's, you know, I think Jim said it best, it's hard to visualize 7,000 or 13,000 acres. But how many, how many proposed houses are we talking about that could be built?
Comprehensive plan isn't proposing that.
It's about 500.
Yeah. Okay, so, I mean, are we talking about, we're going to add 1,000 more, or, because, you know, where I was going with that, I was, I was just wondering, because we already talked about, we have a hard time delivering emergency services to the far east side as it is. And I was going down the same path as you, Mayor, that, you know, it's a lot of, I mean, it's not just $300,000. You know, there's a lot of ancillary costs that go into there as well. There was a reference on the documents we had for tonight of $125,000 for lane widening. What was...
Lane widening and the water system oversizing as well.
Okay. What, are we talking about, we need to widen the streets to make a better thoroughfare to people to get further back down in there? So, my thought was, is doesn't that kind of set us up for the same problem that we have, that we addressed, or, well, the council addressed this a few weeks ago with the Fox Creek Road, where we have a nice wide lane and everybody's driving as fast as they can through there, and the neighborhood wanted it slowed down. I mean, aren't we propagating the same issue to happen potentially if we widen one out there, too?
Sure, that can be one outcome. Now, you know, on the other hand, if you've got the traffic, it'll, it'll slow down, too, if you have enough traffic.
Well, that's a good point, that's a very good point, too. And Jim, the last time this came before council, you actually mentioned you were going to go back and look whether or not the eight-inch line actually might be big enough to service the area anyway. And I was curious what you had discovered on that.
Our staff did take a look at the eight-inch line. Can it serve, can an eight-inch extension of the sanitary sewer serve the remainder of the Grove subdivision if it continued? It could. At the base level of, at least, these are very preliminary calculations, not a lot, but if you look at the overall flow anticipated, we do believe that it could accommodate it. So, that is positive. That wouldn't accommodate for a lot beyond, further to the north, but it would allow for the continuation of that. So, we did take a look at it.
Okay. So, that, the existing, the rest of the Grove is okay, but if there was additional subdivisions north of, that haven't been envisioned today, then we have a problem?
Yes, we, we knew it could accommodate the Grove extensions. Anything past that, it looked like there might have been some minimal capacity, but we weren't going to, you know, kind of project what that could accommodate. But it wouldn't be anything large.
Okay. And I'm just curious, and this is just a, I don't know if there's a real answer to this, or if it's just a kind of a rhetorical question, but, I mean, is the policy have always been, you know, we have developers in our community who have done a fabulous job of building subdivision stuff, but is the policy always kind of been of a, if you develop it, the city will annex it, for lack of a better term? I mean, is that where we've always been in the past? And so, doesn't matter where we want growth to be necessarily out of the comprehensive plan, but if a developer has a property and they decide, I'm going to develop it, even if it's not in the comprehensive plan, is the assumption the system is going, the city is going to annex it and take responsibility for it anyway?
So, is it rhetorical or not?
I think maybe that's probably rhetorical. I won't hold you to that one. I won't hold you to that one. So, just some thoughts that I'm thinking about through this, you know, I mean, obviously...
Alderman, could I, could I just give one answer, you know, to that in part? Because, you know, eight years ago, you know, when I came here, the one thing we did identify is that what was not occurring is any kind of fiscal impact analysis of, if this development takes place, if there is this annexation, what kind of financial impact is that going to have on the city, both from a revenue standpoint, but also on the expenditure and expense standpoint? And is this project going to be sufficient to pay its own way, to actually pay for the growth that it would contribute? Or would the general taxpayers have to subsidize, in a sense? So, I do want to just point that out, and since then, you know, on any big projects, I don't think we've really had one yet, but the council committed soon after that, that going forward, they would not allow another project like this, even to get past the discussion stage, without some sort of fiscal impact analysis, so that there would be transparency and, you know, facts as to what we would really be encouraging, encountering here. Because I think the overall philosophy, as it changed at that point, is new growth should pay its own way, and not look to the taxpayers to subsidize heavily, as in the case of the Grove. So, I thought that is maybe one important policy difference I saw occurring back in 2009, 10, from the past to going forward.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. 30-second story is, when I was in accounting classes in college, I actually had a meeting here at the city in engineering, and we were talking, looking at all these maps that cover the walls everywhere in engineering. And Jim, you weren't in charge yet, so I'll exempt you from this conversation. But I asked, one of the things I asked was, how do you figure out a return on investment to know if we should do these things or not? And the answer I got was, what are you talking about? This is government, we don't do that. So, it was, that was, you know, 20 years ago now, and we have different attitudes, and I'm very happy about that. So, I'll let it go at that.
Well, this may be governed, and we do that. Alderman Longway.
Okay, sure. I have a few questions. I, well, one is one comment. I know we keep talking about population projections, but I wanted to point out that people might actually, there are some people who like new, so it doesn't necessarily mean that just because the population is not growing, doesn't mean that there won't be any demand for newer homes. You know, and I see that happening in the community quite often, is that people, you know, after four or five years in one neighborhood say, well, I'm going to the next one, because I like what's there better. I'll let you comment, and then I'll have something.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, tier-one development, which is priority-one, which is infill, and it's not just infill, it's also redevelopment, and that can, that does produce opportunities for new construction. does produce opportunities for new construction as well. All right. It's just, it's an emphasis of communities. Successful communities have been going that direction over the last 10, 15 years. Certainly, what was the other point? Shoot. Go ahead. Why don't you jump in and I'll try to remember.
To complement that, a lot of the issues for tier one within, for the infill that we're going to find, and, and we, the city manager, we've been talking about how to address some of that infrastructure. A lot of the development that is infill, it's not developed for a reason. Whether it's, whether it's a water sewer or some kind of issue, there's some recent property that we've been talking about. There's, there's a reason for that. So we as a, as a, as a community have to figure out, how do we help that, help fill that in? Because people are just looking, developers are just looking for the best return, their own return on investment. And so they're trying to find the best, the cheapest land, the best investment. So as a city, we have to find ways to make that attractive as a community. So those are challenges we have to come up with too.
And the only other point that I, the other point that I did want to make was, at the fringe of the community right now, at the fringe of most of the community where residential exists, the ability to develop just outside of that is still there. We still have lots of room for new development beyond the Grove, outside the Grove. And it, and it would be much easier to serve. Utilities, fire service, police services. We're about to talk about cable or, you know, an internet service. You know, we're not asking them to go out and string cable 50 years in advance of, of any kind of unknown development. And I, I'd like to think that we can treat this the same way.
Good. Other question I have is, so what does 300,000, let's say we went to somewhere downtown, what does it buy you in terms of sewers?
Sure. We are, from a staff perspective, we are a big fan of lining, what we've been doing. We know there can be issues in some of the older parts of the community with older plumbing and private plumbing fixtures. But, but we still think that is the best bang for our buck on some of the interior. So instead of building new sewers or looking at that, we really need to be maintaining what we have. And so we would even be recommending on expanding our existing lining program. Again, you're seeing, you know, it varies, sometimes two and a half times cheaper than, than to dig up new sewers, sometimes much greater than that. So, so that's kind of what we're looking at. From an overall perspective, it costs us about $50,000 a block to resurface. So that you have some kind of an idea on, what does that money get you?
Surface or line?
Resurface. So I'm jumping to asphalt. So you have an idea of, you know, $300,000 is not chump change. That is money that is very much needed in every infrastructure facet that we have.
And then I was also looking at the $125,000 for street widening. And I know we've talked about that, you know, trying to slow people down and, you know, and, you know, more cities are going to narrow our streets. But is there a way we can make a trade off, for example, with, and not do the oversizing of the street and use that for something else, for sewers?
We have both, a street and a water main. So again, Water Director Bob Yale is here, but there's $25,000 also allotted for the water main oversizing. Don't want to lose sight of that. But the street oversizing, Kickapoo Creek Road, which is the road that we're talking about, if you look at overall grid networks for this community, we've talked about this from a Hershey Road perspective, you know, whenever you have those, you have, you typically try to have those on every half mile. So you have arterials or collectors, you space them out in more of a grid pattern to be able to move traffic. That's why it was there. But if as a city, we choose to say, this isn't important to us, that's where we can make, you know, a policy level decisions like that. From a transportation perspective, I would say that the city really fell short from an east-west perspective 50 years ago. There was a 1960s transportation plan that said, a lot of our east-west roads, you know, the, we, we dropped the ball. We didn't, we didn't really accommodate a lot of east-west flow in this community. That's affected us as a community. That, that's affected our ability to, to move traffic. You know, Oakland Avenue is, is very good. We don't have very good east-west movement from a, if you look at it. We, so the Kickapoo Creek Road is the example that we would focus on to say, we really need to take a good, hard look at that if we, if we don't look at how to convey traffic long-term.
Okay. Got it. One last thing.
Okay. Because we're almost out of time.
Yeah, thank you.
What I'd like to see is what would happen, let's say, five, six years. I want to see some numbers. You know, what does that $3,000 become if we have to do the oversizing then, dig it up? And, because I haven't seen numbers when it comes to that. You know, inflation, cost of materials, at least that would help me make a better decision.
I could throw a dart at a dartboard, but past that, I mean, if it's, let's say, 40 years down the road, very hard to project in a backyard, creek restoration, what the cost would be. But it, you know, we, you've all seen that, whenever you have to maintain sewers and, and have to come back in and dig them up. It's, it's just not easy. Let's, let's just, that doesn't mean it's real, there's not better choices. It is a value. As, as Alderman Black pointed out, it's a, it's a value judgment by the council. But it is, it's not easy nor cheap.
Alderman, say to them. Thank you, Mayor. And I'll be brief. And I thought, and Boko was going to ask this Jim, and I, and I always hate to, to put numbers here. And, and this is not meant to put you on the spot. But what is, what is an approximate cost per linial foot of re-lining when we re-line sewers? In other words, because where I'm going with this is, is how many feet of sewer does $300,000 re-line?
Give me about 30 seconds and I could go back and get that and come back up. But I don't think I have 30 seconds, but I'll be glad to email something out to the council. I want to make sure I get you an accurate number. We just got done with some, some work on that. So we have some pretty good numbers I could get to you.
So, so again, just so, if, and if you're going to do that, then I'd be interested like, and how many linial feet in a block are we talking about?
Absolutely.
So we said six, six blocks of resurfacing. How many blocks of re-lining? Again, just for some context, I think at, at least would be helpful for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could, I'd like to ask Jim to come back or to provide separately to the council some information too. If you notice, and Tom even mentioned, there's a very unusual formula being used here for upsizing, such as the sanitary sewer line. I've never seen this in any other city I've worked in. But as, as you notice here, the cost sharing formula puts a much heavier burden on the city because it's based on more percentage of flow. I, I've never seen that. But the, the reason I bring that up is I think what Jim could do is take that same kind of scenario, eight inch versus 12, 12 inch, and what is more the standard formula, that is determine what the cost is just to build the eight inch and the cost of the pipe and everything. But then to determine if we were to just have them install a 12 inch pipe, what is that cost differential? The pipe cost and then a reasonable portion of the labor. I think what we might be finding is that cost differential is a significant different figure than what we're looking at here. May, maybe not. But I, I think if you could at least do that, because irregardless of whether it's this or anything else, I think that is kind of casting a, a real shock factor over some of these cost figures because of how the, the formula was negotiated back 10 years ago. So it would be, I think, for everyone's benefit, factually, just be helpful to see the difference in using this other more traditional formula.
Okay. Thank you very much. So at this point, do the staff needs direction? Is there generally, we're not overtly voting, but is there a general agreement or even majority agreement on the council that we make a budgetary amendment change in whether it's re-lining sewers? You know, we can get some of that information. That's a policy decision that we can make at a later point.
I think I'd like more information. Sounds like there are a few questions here that we'd like to have answered.
One, more information? Yeah.
I'm not opposed to this, but I would like time to talk to the people at the Grove. Just, again, just so they know.
Sure. And as I said, we wouldn't be voting on this. And, you know, it's not going to be a week from tonight. Alderman Bray?
And I'd like some information on this realignment of costs that city manager discussed.
Sure. And that, that would be doable as part of the packet.
Thank you.
And I know where you stand. Okay. Alderman Schmidt?
And I'm very interested in the budget amendment.
Budget amendment?
I am as well.
Oh, you want more information?
I'm applying for the budget amendment as well. And I can't imagine that I'm going to see anything in some of these numbers that's been at this way on the budget.
Okay. So I think you have a, it's clear where the majority is. So I think it's safe to go ahead and draft something. And, but, but also more information that people like. And obviously, we can circle back with the, and, and thank you for reaching out, Diana, as a Alderman, to the Grove Homeowners Association. Okay, at this point, let's move on. And we have a discussion of Metronet, high-speed internet in the city and all the fun things that are happening.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the city council. I wanted to take the opportunity today to update you on the status of the current Metronet desire to provide the high-speed internet to the city, mostly to the western side of the city. Staff has been working on this now for about six months. And I think we have all of the information together. Before I proceed though, I would like to introduce three people that are here. They aren't going to give a presentation, but they'll be available to answer questions for you. First of all, we have Marty Behrens, the Division Three Supervising Engineer from Ameren. If you'd stand up, please. And then we have Kathy Scheller, the Director of Business Development from Metronet, and Dave Ketterer here to answer any questions that you may have. First of all, one of the reasons we wanted to bring this to you for discussions is to identify the, the nature of the problem to you here. And that is that Metronet would like to provide high-speed internet to the city. In much of the city, mostly the eastern part of the city, they can underground now because we provided for that. In the western part of the city, however, under grounding would be prohibitive and it requires putting in new poles. Our pole ordinance says that what we should do is use joint poles wherever we can. And Metronet would like to use the Ameren poles exist in much of the city where they would like to provide this service. However, the Ameren poles are at full capacity now. And of course, the pole ordinance says that if it poses a danger and can't be safe, then we would put up new poles. And at such times as the other poles could be jointly used, then the city can require the new poles to be removed and joint poles to be used. The reason for that is to try to preliminate, or try to eliminate the proliferation of new poles in areas where we're trying to revitalize the neighborhood. That having been said, the number of poles that would have to be put in the west part of the city would be significant. We'd increase the number of poles in the city about 37%. The city engineer has estimated that that would be perhaps 2,000 more poles that would go in the western part of the city. To give you an idea of what that would look like, I've given some examples here. And this is just an example of a, of a street. And what happens, this is East Washington Street. And what it shows you there is an example of poles that would have to be put up. The poles that have the big circles on them are new poles on that block, block of East Washington. The ones of the little square circles with the little X's in them are the existing poles. So you can see it increases the number of poles significantly. Here's another example. And this is an alley now. And this is a public alley north of Taylor Street. And what you can see here is that the circles that have the solid colors in them would be new poles that would have to be put up between the existing poles. And you see what that means is we about double the poles in some of these areas. I want to show you a picture of what that looks like now. Here is, here is a picture of an alley on, I'm losing the audience here. Yeah. You want to take a break?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. This is a picture of, of an alley east of Denver Street. And what it shows you here is the existing poles are the circles with the X's in it. And the new poles are the ones that have the solid ones in it. And here's a picture of what that particular alley looks like. And you can see on the left-hand side are the existing three poles. And when we build this neighborhood out, we have these two poles on the south. So you can see now on this picture that on the right side of that alley, there'd now be two new poles put in there as we go down the alley. And that just gives you an example of what this, this would look like as we begin to put new poles in there. What happens is the current franchise agreement though, that Metronet has, does generally give them the right to put up new poles, subject to the city engineer's consideration of the pole ordinance and in consideration of all of the other rules and regulations that the city has concerning the locating of them and trees. But the city engineer can begin permitting these poles. And generally, Metronet can begin to put these, put these new poles in and provide service to the city. And at some point in the future, when Ameren may have more ability on their poles to sustain these additional lines, we can require Metronet to go and joint use those poles and take the new poles out. And the reason we wanted to bring this to your attention is because there is great interest to get Metronet service in the city, in particular in the western part of the city. But we did want to make you aware of what this would do to the neighborhoods where we are trying to revitalize them. And it would double the poles that we have to put up in those neighborhoods. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Alderman, Peter?
Thank you. Why can't they bury the lines like they did on the east side if they can't use the poles?
Yeah. I, I, the reason is that it would be cost prohibitive when in the east side we were beginning to put the neighborhoods in, we required undergrounding. So the land was provided for it. In the west side of town, those provisions were not there. So we have buried water lines and sewer lines and other internet service. So it'd be very difficult to dig through there and get around all of those. And it would be cost prohibitive for them to provide the service in those areas. The, as an example, the cost of, of putting up new poles is $800 or $900 a pole. To redo the poles that they've got on there with the Ameren poles might be $12,000 or $15,000 a pole. And it would be cost prohibitive for them to dig. So their only option to provide the services to put the new poles in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you, okay. Alderman Schmidt?
First of all, thank you. You have spent much on this.
Yes, we have.
As has Metronet. And, and we really appreciate that. I, I think it's unfortunate that we have to add these poles, even though they are likely to be temporary. But honestly, for the greater good and for what we want to see this community become technologically, economically, I, this to me is, we need to do this. So I'm, that's, I'm, my simple declaration.
Okay. Alderman, Matthew?
So with the, you said the cost prohibitive with the undergrounding. Do you mean because we don't own easements or we don't know where the easements are? I mean, we're, you know, because we've got a, well, a plethora of poles. Is, but those poles right now have Comcast on them. They have Frontier telephone lines on them. And of course, we have Ameren on them. But, I mean, why are, you know, how do we put together a policy? Or is there a future policy we could look at that says, you know, we want to go back and we want to bury all those services at some point in the future? I mean, how do we, how do we go about doing that?
Well, I think there are two questions here. And that's why I've got the experts here. And I'm going to ask Marty Behrens to address the issue about putting lines up on their poles. You said that they have Frontier and other lines on there. And that has been a question about not being, why they couldn't put more lines on that. I'm going to ask him if he'd address that for you.
Welcome, Marty.
Good evening. Good to see you. Couple of things. What happens when you see a picture of it is, is we have some older plan in the downtown areas. And in, in absence of Metronet or really any other pole attachment company, our plan is perfectly good and useful. Our life of poles is at least 37 years and can be out to 50 or 60. And so what we do as part of the, the agreement with all of the, the attachment companies is, is we say, hey, we're willing to do the work. However, once you start looking at the, the amount of expense to rearrange our facilities plus the cost of setting a taller pole, it becomes pretty cost prohibitive for Metronet or some of the other attachment companies. Stepping aside and maybe kind of talking on Metronet's behalf, I did a little bit of a review of the three areas that they looked at. And combination of, of things occur. In the alley you look at, we have several different alleys where currently we have Frontier on one side and we have Ameren on the other side. For whatever reason, we couldn't come to agreement on co-locating facilities on the pole. And hence, that's why the city developed kind of a guidance or ordinance guidance for the utilities into it. Second thing I'll maybe address is step outside and, and talk about easements. When I came into the area in the mid 90s, the easements on the underground were inadequate for space. for spacing. The city has a requirement within their ordinance to have five-foot space from any underground pipe they have. And so what that meant was is for the utilities to go underground, we did not have adequate space. In the picture above, basically, the only easement that's really defined is, is the width of the alley. So there's no additional easement. And for either whether it's Ameren or for Metronet to go out nationally, negotiate those easements with several thousand property owners in the west side, doesn't really become feasible for them to underground. And I think I'm probably stating that correctly, correct? So.
May I ask a clarification question? How do we get from a $700 cost of a pole for the new ones that Metronet wants to put in to $12,000 to replace an existing pole? Could you just walk us through that?
A couple of things happen on our side on costs versus what Metronet would have is, is generally, they would be setting a 30-foot pole for clearance, and they're required to meet the National Electric Safety Code. Again, they're only designing for a lightweight fiber optic cable. Where when we do a design, generally, our standard currently is, based on regulations that apply from the Department of Justice, which means AVIEN standards, or whether it's from the National Electric Safety Code, and the weight of the transformers, the weight of all the wires is, we're looking at a significant taller pole, which would be a 45-foot pole. Some of the poles you're seeing in the pictures are only 35 to at most 40-foot. And so what happens is, is it comes back to, from a pole attachment, Metronet runs into a couple of situations. The pole is not adequate strength in some cases. And then generally, the most common reason is, is the pole isn't tall enough. So.
Okay. I was, even if the pole's got to be 10 feet taller, that just seems like a significant price jump there, obviously.
The other thing, I guess, to answer your question, maybe explain a little bit longer. By the time we look at replacing a pole, we have significant hardware on there. Safety-wise, we have to have an observer at the ground, because in many cases, we're dealing with 12,000 volts at the top of the pole, where Metronet can get by with a single service tech, either that on a ladder truck to attach that conductor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Steve, for clarification, I was actually talking more about the easements to go back and say, well, how does the city, what do we do from a long-term, you know, maybe it's a 35- or 50-year plan to say, at some point in the future, we would like all these buried? And how do we start, is there anything we need to do and start thinking about now as we're talking about reinvesting into the older core, that we can set ourselves up for a future where we can go back and start burying some of these poles and, or burying some of the wires that are on there? Other than that, I will say that I put out a kind of a question out to a lot of the residents who I deal with on a regular basis, and they're very supportive of, if it takes extra poles right now to get this done, then let's put in extra poles. Because they want competition, which will drive additional choices, and they want options. And so everybody that I heard from is very supportive of, if more poles is what it takes, then let's do more poles. Thank you.
Thank you. And your question about the easements and ultimately burying these is a long-term question. It has a lot to do with the revitalization of West Bloomington, and I don't have an answer for that now, but I will certainly work on that. You also asked a question about why it might be cost prohibitive to go underground. It might be worth, for just a moment, asking Metronet to discuss the undergrounding option. Could you talk to that for just a moment?
Hello, thank you. My name's Dave Keiser, for the record, K-E-Y-S-E-R. One of our past colleagues passed away. His last name was Ketterer, so it was a typo in there. So basically, going for the underground and overhead, when we do cost analysis, we average $6,500 per pole for basic cost analysis on a pole. But based on the size and what's on the pole, it can be 10, 12, even 15 or $20,000, depending on the type of pole. So when we dip underground, someone mentioned in other areas, we can take, like this model here, and dip underground and miss a pole. So when you compare a pole replacement of $6,500 to $10 a foot for underground, so we're averaging $10 a foot for the installation between the two furthest poles if we miss one. So if it's 100-foot span, we've got to put in 200. So on the underground cost compared to pole, that's cheaper, costs us less. But when we turn around and do it the other way and go overhead, it's only, I think we're right at $4.95 per overhead strand. So adding the new poles allow us to install the network at a much lesser cost. Also, we can, also, there's a, we can go around the damaged pole because of load capacity and install our own pole, because we have a heavier strand and a drop. It's a steel and a fiber. But we can drop to the pole with a little tiny wire. It won't cause any more stress. So it's way around a situation that is highly in the southwest part, in one of the several areas we're working on, that can allow us to get on and start moving forward in the area.
Elder Woman Bray.
So I've heard some discussion here about the height of the poles and that possibly because of tensions, you have different requirements from Ameren. But, and let's just get it out there, is there some other solution other than underground and adding poles every time along both sides of the alleyway? Is there a even better pole that could accommodate everyone's lines? In other words, get rid of what's currently there, go back with this better pole that would accommodate both Ameren and Metronet? Is there such an animal, if you will?
Well, that goes back to the cost of being pushed back on Ameren, or Metronet from Ameren for the cost replacement. Some of the poles are pre-existing damages, some of them are already outdated, some of them are damaged as being, they're called P1s and P2s for priority for changing replacement. So some of those are being put back on us because we fall in a different timeframe.
And she'll just jump in.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Sure. Kathy Scheller, I'm at Business Development and External Affairs. And quite frankly, Alderman Bray, we have been working on a solution with Ameren and the city for quite some time. The only plausible solution for this part of the city, for us to get everybody in, you know, expedite the deployment, is to come up with this mechanism at this time. So it's something that, it is literally, we've been here doing this for six months. Really, the only solution for us to do this at this time. I will state that Metronet wants to be a good citizen in Bloomington, and we've worked really hard to do that just from a cultural standpoint. We're looking forward to coming here and deploying. We're looking forward to giving you world-class infrastructure that will assist. And at this point in time for the expedition of this deployment, this was the best solution after six months of work.
If I could add one thing to that, though, your question, Alderman Bray, is exactly right. You could put up a bigger new pole that would accommodate all of them, and at some point in time, Ameren will probably do that in terms of upgrading their poles. And when they do that, then we will require Metronet to take their poles down and go to the new poles. But we aren't at that point yet. And as Kathy said, in order to get that up now, we need to move forward with this solution, and sometime in the future, we may be able to get those bigger, better poles up.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, are there any, if our discussion is completed, you weren't searching for any direction, this is just an update, correct?
No, and as indicated, there's a draft letter. The engineers prepared on a case-by-case basis to authorize the erection of new poles, if that is ultimately the only way to provide service, you know, on a block-by-block basis. So.
Great. Thank you very much.
And I think what will happen is we'll begin to proceed on doing that, but we wanted to make sure that the City Council and the city knew that that new service could be put out there, but we wanted everybody to understand what the implication would be for neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. Okay. And we move to our last item for the evening, a presentation of the fiscal year 2017 to 2021 Draft Capital Improvement Plan by Mr. Hales and Ms. Silva. So I have you for 10 minutes, and then we begin our discussion.
I thought it was 60 minutes was not there. Yeah, we saved the longest to last. How's that?
Your poll ratings dropped.
I need a protein bar.
We'll try and shorten our presentation, but I, you know, I think.
You're not really looking for direction from us as much as just giving us information and some initial feedback, correct?
And you should have in front of you this document kind of showing our Word Cloud. Let's see. Do you have that? I had some copies here. Tonight, we just want to talk for a few minutes on our process going forward to ultimately result in, the goal line is going to be the adoption of this five-year capital improvement plan. And as this particular, I think it's called Word Cloud, shows, there is a lot of high-priority, major projects, capital projects, that are all competing for a very small, finite source of revenue. And this, we can even continue to expand this, but this particular visual, you know, just hopefully illustrates what I think is one of the key goals of a capital improvement plan. And if you recall from the first chapter, and that is to establish a balance between the very many capital improvement projects and the resources that we have to work with. So I hope that whether it's tonight or in the months ahead, we all kind of keep in mind that in time of time, we hear from you is, will give us the big picture. And that is exactly what this five-year plan is designed to do, is to help us make sure we don't look at anything in a vacuum, that if it's underground utilities, if it's street resurfacing, fire station renovation, economic development and assisting with that, sidewalks, you know, outdoor pools, et cetera, et cetera. We want to make sure that you have that complete picture, including what are going to be some of the financial demands in the future, that we may have no choice but to, as in the case of some of these facilities, either shut the facility down or, because we just don't have the money. There is a lot of, I think, significant accomplishment. As you know, this time last year, or I think it was more into the early fall, we began to make presentations to you. That was because we had brought forth and had the council approve a number of capital master plans. Keep in mind, there's still a few to bring to you for final approval. There's the downtown streetscape plan. There's also going to be the bricks master plan. There is still a streets master plan out there. So, and you just made, approved two contracts for a comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan update, as well as a water master plan. So there's still a lot of moving parts going forward. However, even with, you know, where we've gone to date, I did want to give you just at this point in time, an overview of what is our next steps. As Patty's going to share with you, we do feel that one, a couple of critical things we need council input on prior to any final vote on the CIP is, one, to consider a increase in our sanitary sewer fees and our stormwater fees. Why is that important? We are seriously under-capitalized as far as revenue to help move ahead with any significant future sanitary sewer or stormwater projects. In fact, you might recall, as you look at the fiscal year 2018 project, I think it was Stormwater Fund, where there was just one project, and I think it was well under half million dollars. That's all we could afford right now on a pay-as-you-go basis. Sanitary sewer, while maybe in a little better situation, it's also in desperate need of consideration, at least, of more resources if, if we want to be more proactive and aggressive in doing more rather than less in the way of improvements. So we have those two fees. We also want to bring back to you, probably in this order, after the fees, a proposed bond to be issued to address some significant high-priority needs, such as street resurfacing, which could include not only street resurfacing, but some underground utilities that would go along with those street resurfacing needs. This could be in the $10, $20 million, plus or minus. We do believe that that should be something to consider, especially to move some of these infrastructure projects along. That would be another way to look at issuing debt to help provide for some needed revenue sources in the next few years. With those kind of three items, then we believe that by probably early fall, the council would be in a great position then to adopt a balance, five-year capital improvement plan that would incorporate some needed answers to those three issues. With that in mind, let me turn the last few minutes to Patty to just kind of comment on some of these and other challenges we're going to face, not only on the capital end, but also on the operating, and how that all ties back into this discussion of approving a five-year CIP. Patty.
David? Well, I'm always happy to come and talk about budgets, as you know, and the capital improvement plan, we're making a lot of strides in the right direction. We are measuring our assets. We are coming up with master plans for them. We have some funding plans already, some rate studies prepared. When I started here in 2012, I'm not sure we had any of that. So we're really beginning to address our long-term liabilities on many fronts, but we have got so much work to do. And I know you guys are all aware of that, and I'm not going to beat it to death, but, you know, we are, we'd be remiss if we didn't let you know, you know, that we have to start addressing the sewer and storm. They do not have money to even do their annual capital maintenance. Jim was talking about the sewer lining program. We should be spending about $2 million a year, I think, in sewer lining and preventative maintenance around the city. We've got multiple stormwater projects from the Farm Bureau Detention, many, many others. And we have a great plan for you guys to address those issues and really be very successful at that, not only creating some reserves in those same funds, creating some sustainability, also being able to ultimately pay some cash for capital rather than rolling debt service. And ultimately, that's where you really want your general fund to be as well, is that, you know, we're able to pay some cash for capital, that we're able to address many of the things in this capital plan that don't necessarily have an easily identifiable source, like sewer would be sewer rates, you know, water would be water rates, but facilities and many of the things that are on, you know, this, I'd like to call it a migraine. You know, we've got to get creative, and there's a lot of work to do to do that. You know, we still need, you know, more street resurfacing, new street construction, safety at many of our intersections. There's just so many things. But again, they didn't happen overnight. We have a lot of deferred maintenance and things like that, and we can't fix it overnight. We do need to pace ourselves, and that's really important, even with, you know, economic developments up here, which is great, because building our tax base, same thing. I like to think about pace there, so that we can afford to move all things ahead incrementally, and that we cannot, you know, and we can have an intergenerational tax parity. So having said that, this is just a plan. We're going to be dropping in the updated numbers, because this is from fiscal year 17 now. We'll be dropping in the 18, five-year capital requests and things from the departments. But, you know, we have to also keep in mind our debt ratios and comparables to peers when it comes to utility debt, like water, sewer, and storm. If you have a dedicated revenue to those capital improvement plans, the credit rating agencies almost consider that a bit of a wash. It does factor into your debt ratios initially, excuse me, but after a couple of years, they come off because they can see that dedicated revenue coming in, and they want to make sure that you have good.
Just to clarify that, so if, let's say, we were to increase water sewer rates by $2 or $3 a month, that money could be dedicated to a bond, and with today's rates, we could conceivably get quite a bit of bang for our buck. buck?
Yes, in fact, the plan that we had gone over briefly, it was a brief presentation, but I think it's almost a twenty-year plan for sewer and stormwater. We have rates mapped out for over ten years that could be done automatically, and you would have, yes, revolving debt to address your needs, as well as cash, reserves for your needs, as well as the fifteen percent fund balance is what you need in those funds minimally. But the benefit to doing utility debt or utility capital is that over time, they are not included in your debt ratios, because it's dedicated revenue for critical need. And so it's, they're in there, but it's not like if we went out and, J H is a bad example here, but, you know, spent two hundred million dollars on a movie theater. That would not be necessarily, you know, something that we could, they could make that argument. At all times, we wanna remain, keep our credit rating, which is why we also talk about the operating fund, the general fund. Right now, we don't pay any cash for capital of the general fund. This year, as you guys know, we always have the road, which is a dedicated, a street resurfacing revenue, which is mainly the only non-kind of enterprise fund capital we have going forward, but we didn't have that before. So again, we're doing, we've made a lot of strides, and I don't want us to forget that, as we have these very difficult, you know, kinda conversations. Let's go back and look at where we were four years ago, five years ago. We are making really, really good strides. So can we get there? Yes. Do we need to spend some time together? Yes. We can definitely get there, we can have a great plan, and we'd love to go into more detail with you, in small groups, large groups, or whatever it may be, to really get into that sewer and stormwater. But keep in mind that we have to think about these things, not in a silo, but also in the context of the nineteen budget that's coming up. So I think it would be helpful for us to have some small group meetings, so I can stone you to death with popcorn, which is basically what I think this budgeting seems like to you guys sometimes, but we will get there. And I think there's just so much detail, it's very hard over the podium, you know, I like to throw those spreadsheets out at you guys and look at those numbers, so. But I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the time you guys have taken already on the budgets, and also, you know, letting us make all of our presentations, and I look forward to working with you on the nineteen budget, which is, by the way, gonna start in August.
Oh, fun. For two new members, the fun begins. And thank you, Patty Lynn and David, for all your hard work on this, and to, obviously, our other department heads, it's really great. Alderman Sage.
Quick question, since we're, not that I'm tracking, but we're thirty-four minutes long, I think, here in our meeting time.
So sorry.
But I wanna look at page two, just very quickly, David. Towards the top of that page, there are a couple of different sections, one called qualifying criteria, the other one called project priorities. And I appreciate very much the fact that the leading priority, I'm assuming these are in kind of a hierarchy there, presented, so that, for instance, the master plans will be the most, or considered maybe the highest authoritative source for stuff that we're gonna look at from a prioritization perspective, and I'm okay with that. I'm interested in the section up above that says qualifying criteria, and I'm looking at the ones that are there, and for instance, the third and fourth bullet points, maintain existing assets or improve operations, which is more, could we just ask, where are you? I'm sorry.
There's a lot of page twos.
Look for the Reader's Guide section.
You're right.
The Reader's Guide is back, maybe ten pages.
I, yeah.
It's in the second.
If you can find the Reader's Guide, then it's the second page there.
There are a lot of page twos, and I just happened to be on the right one.
I'm sorry, that's my bad.
I was tracking with you, I was on the right page. You were so right about that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm in the Reader's Guide, I didn't know there were multiple page twos, I apologize.
I didn't pick up on that.
So, let me back up again. So David, those two sections, qualifying criteria and project priorities, and I'm making the assumption, and this will be, these will be yes or no questions, that, for instance, the master plans and project priorities is meant to, is there a hierarchy there in those bullet points, that for instance, project plans would be the more important driver for how projects would be prioritized, rather than perhaps city committees and commissions? Is that a correct assumption?
If, I, let me say yes, but also, keep in mind that most of these sections, the prioritization has gone on solely at the department level.
Absolutely, and so, thank you, that's a nice segue where I was going to. So the section up above that says qualifying criteria, and particularly, I mean, there are four bullet points listed there, and I'm looking just kind of more specifically at bullet points three and four, maintain existing assets or improve operations, kind of a maintain what we have, versus, or at least that's the way I would interpret it, versus improve revenue potential, which is kind of building for the future, that kind of thing. Does, do you, would it be beneficial to staff if the council provided a little bit more clarity as to a priority from a, you know, maintain what we have versus building new? Or does this give you the direction, does this give staff the sufficient direction they need to begin to, to continue those priority conversations at the staff level?
I believe it does.
Okay.
Yes, at this point in time, 'cause keep in mind, you know, I think when a key word there is health and safety, there's some new projects that really have a safety component to them, a public safety component. So, you know, that's, but yes, I think we're following that, and, you know, as we bring the final recommendation, it'll probably have some additional tweaking based on this criteria as well.
So maybe just if we wanna communicate a hierarchy there, maybe we, maybe more clearly indicate that there, because, unlike you, when I first read it, I thought health and safety would probably lead that section, as opposed to some other kind of generic statement about council-adopted plans and policies. If there's an opportunity to perhaps rework that a little bit, that might be helpful. Okay? Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Nothing else? Oh, you're ready to press it? Go ahead. Boca.
I feel happy.
In your dreams, baby. Okay, so quick question about issuing debt. I know we've spoken about the, you know, some of the concerns we have in terms of, you know, revenue in the future, possible structural deficit, so how do you balance those two competing demands in wanting to issue thirty-five, you know, fifty million dollars in debt?
So my rule of thumb, a great financial discipline is, if you issue debt, you have a revenue to pay for it, so you dedicate a revenue to pay for it. And yes, we're gonna have some savings in our debt service, so there's, you know, kind of that footprint that was attached in the back here. So let's say next year's budget debt service goes down by a million dollars, but yet you keep it at, say it's ten million now. You can wrap and work with debt, so that you're always at that same amount every year without growing it, when you don't have a dedicated funding source. If we're talking about utilities, it gets really complicated, but for sure, you with revenue matching and accounting standards and credit rating agencies are gonna wonder why we don't wanna increase like a sewer rate for a sewer project. And we can do that, it's our prerogative, but over time, you know, and I'd love to, you know, kinda sit down with you and check all those revenues kind of off, but essentially, if we're gonna take on debt, we can either use our savings, we can use a dedicated revenue, or you could actually reduce your budget to pay for it, but it's gotta be recurring, whatever it is, because over time, you can't just make a one-time, you know, oh, we're gonna take the savings this year, and then next year, it's not there, and you have a hole, so, you know, it takes up, it takes up planning. Help that out.
So essentially, what you'd also like then, as we move forward, is to have some, maybe two or three on-one group meetings, or some people?
That'd be great, yeah.
And then we could have the-
If you guys would have it.
Schedule some of those and begin to walk through this. Actually, they can be three-on-ones, 'cause I don't, I mean, and then you can only do three, I don't have to be there, we can talk in our regular meetings. So maybe that'd be easier on you and David, three meetings, three all the people.
Yeah.
Go forward. Does that sound like a plan?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Well, given the hour, I don't see anybody else dying to speak.
Motion to adjourn.
I would, thank you so much, and at this point, are you?
I would move that we adjourn.
Adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say a "thank you." We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
And I got a bunch of cards here for you, Renee.